Good afternoon, everyone. Oh, thank you. I would like to welcome you to our board meeting. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at Dejawn, you can go to the corner of the room to get translations. We're heading into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we are here to listen to any public comment that might be about our closed session items. The public gets two minutes for public comment per speaker. The closed session items that we are discussing are legal counsel, pending litigation, public employee appointment, public employee, public employee performance evaluation. And that is it. Staff, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. My first public comment was Amy Miles. Send yourself.
Hi, I'm so sorry. Is this, is this only for things for the closed session?
Give me a minute, I need to fill out the form. Please.
Can you hear me? Yeah? Uh, uh, can people hear me? Can people hear me?
Hello, yes, go ahead, we can hear you.
But I'm not sure, I am sorry. Um, I joined late, is this?
I entered late, I don't know if she is still there.
Um. My question is, is this only?
My question is, is this my presentation?
For the open comment?
For the open comments?
Just give us one second, please.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Miles, try again, please.
Okay. Can people hear me now? Can, can people hear me now? Doesn't seem like it.
We can only hear you through Zoom, we can't hear you in the room. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, hold on for one second, they're trying to fix it so that it broadcasts in the room.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't look connected.
No, it should be coming out, every speaker right here. Almost none.
Miss Miles?
Yes. Can people hear me now?
Ms. Miles, can you try to talk, please?
Yes, can you hear me now? I'm not sure folks can hear.
Oh. Okay. Okay, Ms. Miles, give it a try.
Okay, how about now?
Absolutely perfect. Clark Gonzalez, who he figured it out.
Yay, thank you whoever figured it out.
Lord have mercy. Ms. Miles, hold on, we might have figured it out yet. Um, say something else.
Okay, um, uh, I'm trying to, I'm very happy to be here to try to, to speak.
Okay, hold on one second.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Miles, I'm gonna need you to scream. Ready?
Scream? Okay. I did scream, no one heard me. I, I can talk, or can people hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, you picked the right person to scream, so. Um, dear community, I am the proud parent of a Vista High School student, or as Siri reminds me each time I drive my daughter to school, Vista High School, alternative high school. When I proudly tell my daughter's story, which I've done during public comment several times in the last three years, it can be hard for folks to understand the Vista way. Especially when appointing and evaluating faculty. It's the school where learning happens your way, a place where students often pushed out of traditional school settings are met with kindness and care and joy when they transfer into Vista mid-year. That joy was evident today at Vista High School. Carol Peters and her high school leadership students crafted a magical winter season celebration. Students from the Vista family of schools, which serves K through 12 students, arrived from 12 to 3, eating Brooke's homemade cookies and Leanna's latkes, snacking on the treats other families kept dropping off throughout the event. The students and families especially enjoyed making hot cocoa and edible snowmen at the stations provided by Board President Jamila Smith Folds. I am forever grateful for Vista's alternative vision, that learning can happen your way. Much learning happened at today's Vista party. The kids saw they belonged to a community who valued and supported them. So as you consider employee appointments and evaluations in your closed, closed session, I want to emphasize that the Vista community welcomes students where they are, as they are. Vista teachers, especially its lead teachers Katie Marquezzi and Mar, Maricris Crusette, and Principal Edith McCormick, understand how traditional classroom comprehensive settings can tangle up a student's motivation. At Vista, educational trauma is untangled with great care and love. So if your students need an alternative educational setting.
That concludes public comment. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, everyone. We will return at 6:30. We're gonna work on our Zoom issue, but we will be back to start open session at 6:30. Thank you. I don't know if I gavel out. Sometimes I forget.
Because it's, it's, it's gotta be equitization. We're gonna try it in. Different freaking port downtown, every freaking possibility in life. Mike test, testing, testing.
Hold on, that looks good.
Testing, testing. Mike tester, testing Mike.
Testing, testing. Alright. Hey everybody, we're gonna get started in one minute, but there's a CRV, a white CRV. License plate DH98C22 that needs to be moved. Uh. Hello, everybody, good evening. If you have a white ZR, CRB license plate DH98C22, they're asking you to please move your car. Oh, much better. Okay, thank you whoever did that. Um, good evening, everyone. If you have a CRB, white license plate number DH98C22, you need to move your vehicle. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I would like to welcome all of you to our board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below, or at Dejawn, you can go to the corner of the room to get materials. We are returning from closed session. After our opening procedures, the public will have the opportunity to make public comment. The board has changed public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned into staff, they are placed in the order of when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time and alternating between public comment at Dejawn and one on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speaker is permitted. The public will also have the opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after the staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move to our opening procedures. First, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. If you are willing and able, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We are now moving to agenda item B3, land, labor, and body acknowledgement. Staff, do we have the land acknowledgement video? Thank you. Clark Gonzalez, who, can you please read the land acknowledgement? We'll have the video next time.
Of course, thank you. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chechenium Wuekma Karkan Aloni peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants we, of the land we currently occupy.
Thank you so much. We're now moving to the labor and body recognition. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. I also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today. Of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. We are now moving to agenda item B4, the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board Anti-Racist Statement. The West Contra Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and active effort to identify, challenge, and correct racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and community. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCCUSD education. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCCUSD education. To carry WCCUSD education to the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity they produce have shaped us, our schools, and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where each student, staff member, and community partner is respected and valued member to the WCCUSD community. We are uniquely positioned, and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable practices in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being while building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding West Contra Costa Unified School District staff, students, and community to living these standards of anti-racism in our school. We are now moving to agenda item B five, report and ratification of closed session. Superintendent Moses, do we have anything to report out?
Yes, we do. This evening, the board voted to approve the appointment of Jeff Carter as an Executive Director of Business Services. The vote was as followed. Trustee Christian, absent. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. Clerk, sorry, trustee Reckler, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. That concludes the report out from closed session.
Thank you very much. We are now moving to item B six, recognition of board members. Dr. Moses, this is your item.
Thank you, President Smith Folds. Uh, the West Contra Costa Unified School District would like to take this time to recognize uh, the service of our board members to the leadership positions of our board. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge Clerk Gonzalez Hoi. Could you come up, please? This plaque signifies our appreciation for your hard work this past year serving as our clerk of the board. We appreciate all of your dedication and your hard work and your continued efforts to make our district a better place. Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The district would now like to recognize our president of the board. Could you come up, President Smith Folds? Awesome. Maybe give her a round of applause. This plaque signifies our appreciation for your service as the president of our school board. On behalf of the West Contra Costa Unified School District, we thank you for your time, your efforts, and all of your dedication to our students and our schools. Thank you, President Smith Folds.
Thank you.
One more.
Thank you.
We are now moving to... We are now moving to the administration of the Oath of Office to newly elected board members. Item B seven. Item B seven on today's agenda is the swearing-in of newly elected trustee Guadalupe Inyana and Cynthia Hernandez and returning trustee Jamila Smith Folds. First, Ms. Cynthia Hernandez will be issued the oath of office and be duly sworn in by Richmond City Councilmember Claudia Jimenez. Ms. Hernandez will serve as a board member of trustee Area Three. Ms. Hernandez, please stand. Let's go right to the microphone. So go right to that microphone right there, friend. And you wanna... Councilmember Claudia Jimenez, will you please administer the oath to trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you. So please repeat after me. I, Cindy Hernandez.
I, Cynthia Hernandez.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will fully support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all injustice.
Against all injustice.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Of the United States and the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will well and discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Which I am, which I will upon enter, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Hernandez, now please execute the written version of the oath you just took. Trustee Hernandez, before you take your seat on the dais, please take pictures with your family. If you want to take pictures, you can take pictures. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Cynthia.
Ready? One.
Okay. Thank you very much. Come on up and take your seat, ma'am. Thank you, and congratulations to trustee Hernandez. Ms. Guadalupe Inyana, now you will be issued the oath of office and duly sworn in by Honorable John Marquez. Ms. Inyana, will you, will serve as board member of trustee Area Two. Honorable John Marquez, will you please administer the oath to trustee Inyana?
Buenas tardes, ¿cómo está mi gente? Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure, John Marquez, to stand here. It pleases the oath to my friend Guadalupe Inyana. It's just a pleasure and just an honor to do this. Ready? Levanta la mano derecha. Repeat after me. I, Guadalupe Inyana.
I, Guadalupe Inyana.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
In allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
Did I take this obligation freely?
Did I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Will and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Of which I am about to enter.
Now. Thank you very much. You will sign the oath. Thank you very much.
Now please sign the written version of the oath that you just took.
And then John's going to say here it is titled in both copies. And then this is your signature to get it.
Thank you so much. Please take pictures with your family before stepping to the dais. Congratulations again. Okay, welcome to the dais, trustee Inyana.
Okay, now Ms. Jamila Smith Folds will be, will now be issued the oath of office and be duly sworn by the El Cerrito Mayor, Caroline Weisinger. Jamila Smith Folds will continue to serve as board member of trustee Area One. Mayor Weisinger, would you please administer the oath to trustee Jamila Smith Folds?
Oh, there you go. Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jamila Smith Folds. I, Jamila Smith Folds. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. That I will support and defend. This, this Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear the true faith. That I will bear the true faith. And allegiance to the Constitution. And the allegiance to the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the State of California. Of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely. Without mental reservation. Without mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. Or purpose of evasion. And I will well. And I will well. And faithfully. And faithfully. Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Upon which I'm about to enter. Upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you so much, trustee Folds. Let's take our pictures. Take another picture. I'm standing here.
Now trustee Smith Folds and Mayor Weisinger, please execute the written version of the oath you just took.
What do we sign? We have to sign the actual.
Congratulations, trustee Smith Folds. And this concludes, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, everyone. We are now going to welcome my daughter, my other daughter, from Rhode Island to say a few words. Irish, come off mute.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Irish Folds. I am president Jamila Smith Folds' oldest daughter and a former student of Area One, graduating in 2023 from Hercules High School. Can you not hear me?
Try it again, Irish.
Hello? Hello?
Yeah. All right, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Irish Folds. I am president Jamila Smith Folds' oldest daughter. No.
Stop, Irish. Stop. All right, hold on. All right, try it again, Irish.
Hello?
Nope. Trustee Reckler, your own Zoom? Tech, did we know why we can't hear in the room? Oh, Irish maybe have to unmute. Okay, try it again, Irish.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Irish Folds. I am president Jamila Smith Folds' oldest daughter and a former student of Area One, graduating in 2023 from Hercules High School. It is my honor and pleasure to say a few ceremony words on behalf of our family. I cannot remember a day since my mom enrolled me in this district 14 years ago that she has not been working to service children. She was a WCCUSD teacher before I was born. Since I started kindergarten alongside maintaining her own household, she has gone from chaperoning field trips, performing traffic duty, decorating for school events from graduations to spelling bees, and volunteering in individual classrooms to still currently chaperoning field trips, performing traffic duty, decorating for events from graduations to spelling bees, and volunteering in individual classrooms, while simultaneously taking on the role of the entire district's school board trustee and current president, taking three meetings at once, working with students, parents, and teachers to turn up the volume when their educational concerns, and championing the district's first anti-racist policies. I know that she will do everything in her power to continue moving this district towards excellence. My mom is one of only three black women to have ever held this position since the establishment of the school district 59 years ago, and the only black woman to have had the honor of serving twice. She has sat in this position with honor and integrity. No matter how people have tried to cut her down, even when she is criticized, not on her work ethic, but attacked on the consequences of others in action, she has persevered because she knows this role is not about her. It's about the students. She has relentlessly modeled service in unreasonable hospitality. Her actions speak louder than these words, and though it may seem like I'm bragging on her, I'm only saying the things that she won't. My mom was incredible, and we are just so proud of her. Thank you for your time, everyone, and congratulations, mom.
Thank you, Irish Javi. Before we conclude. Hold on one second. Before we conclude, I just want to take a minute and thank everyone. I would not be here without trustee Audrey Miles and trustee Elaine Meriwether. They are the two black women that came before me and sat in this seat. Trustee Audrey Miles could not be here tonight, but trustee Meriwether is here. Trustee Meriwether, could you please stand? Please clap again for trustee Meriwether. I also want to take a minute to thank all of my family members, my husband and my three daughters, one, again, that you just heard from in Rhode Island, my 11th grader who attends Hercules High School, and my ninth, uh-uh, my sixth grader, sorry, Clover, my sixth grader that attends Hercules Middle School. I also want to thank my Boapa sisters. I would not be here and be able to be steadfast in this work without your support every Saturday and every Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. I appreciate you beyond words. You made this possible. To the elected officials that are here tonight, thank you for your trust. Thank you for your conversation. Thank you, because we all share a journey that most people will never understand. To my campaign manager, Carol Peters, thank you so much for getting me through another cycle, and I really appreciate you, my accountability partner, and just the most wonderful person in the world. To my Ben partners, Ben Black Educators Network, thank you so much for coming. Thank you for being a place that builds me up, and thank you for being a place that allows me to vent. Finally, to all the principals that showed up tonight, thank you for your strength. Thank you for being one of the few black principals that we have in the district, and thank you for always showing up for all of our students, especially our black and brown students. I really appreciate you. This has been a journey of a lifetime. To my friends that showed up, those of you who have helped me dry my tears, and those of you who have prayed for me more than I prayed for myself, thank you, and I really appreciate you. You are honored, you are valued, you are loved, and you are appreciated. Cabinet, I absolutely adore and appreciate you allowing me to be your president for the last year. It has been one of the greatest honors in my life to be a member of this dais and to be able to work in the service of these children. Dr. Moses, I've already said everything that I can say to you and about you, but you are amazing, and I know you would take us to the next level. Board trustees, thank you very much. Thank you, student trustees, for all the hard work you did, and we are continuing on. Clark Gonzalez Hoi, I am what? Finished. I am complete. Thank you so very much. Thank you, everyone. Okay. All right, we are now headed on to our annual organization. We are on item B eight. Item B eight, and on today's agenda is the annual organization item. Educational Code Section 18383 and Board Bylaw 9100 requires the board to hold an annual organization meeting to determine the board president and clerk for the upcoming school year. As part of this item, the board will also appoint the board secretary, authorize signatures, set the schedule of the regular board meetings, and set a board calendar for the year. Board Bylaw 9100 states that the board clerk will generally, gen, generally replace the outgoing president. However, based on the advice of legal counsel, the current board retains the discretion to elect any board member to be president. Election of board president. We will begin with the election of the board president. Is there any nomination for board president for the 2025 school year? I nominate Clerk Gonzalez Hoi. Are there any other nominations? Oh, sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Are there any other nominations?
I nominate myself.
Is there a second?
I second.
I invited the board to discuss the nominations for president for the 2025 calendar year. Board, do we have any comments? I do, and then we'll go to, well, trustee Reckler, go ahead and go first. We'll work our way around. Go ahead.
Thank you. I do have comments, and I refer all the board members to the board's Governance Handbook, which was passed in May of 2024. And from it, it is the intent of the board that all board members have an opportunity for board leadership in actual operation. This means that the board president and clerk are elected yearly at the annual organization meeting. They can't hear me.
Make sure that.
There, mine doesn't.
So I would like to, to read from the Governance Handbook, which was passed by the board in May of 2024. It is the intent of the board that all board members have an opportunity for board leadership in actual operation. This means that a board president and clerk are elected yearly at the annual organizational meeting. To run and be seated as president, the members must have served at least one year on the board, and the election complies with the calendar requirements as indicated in California Law 35413A. In the event no member of the governing board has served for at least a year, nor anyone wants to serve, any member may be nominated and elected to the presidency. The clerk is elected from amongst board peers. That means that new trustees are also will, are available, and you may be elected as the clerk of the board. I think this is an election about change. We have new members on the board. We're starting fresh and new. I have not had a chance at leadership. The other two returning members and seated members of the board have served all four years as either clerk or president. It is time for a change on the board. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Clark Gonzalez Hoi, and then I have a comment.
Thank you. Um, well, first of all, thank you so much for the nomination. Uh, I'll say that being on this board has been an honor. I believe I am someone who takes this work incredibly seriously and finds ways to collaborate. If elected president, it would be my honor to represent you as your leadership. I commit to continue to lead through equity, fighting racism, and ensuring that our students are centered in the work that we do. Being clerk has taught me a lot. I've learned a lot from our outgoing president and her unapologetic way of fighting racism in our district. I hope that if elected, that we'll all continue to work together. I welcome our new trustees. I actually really look forward to working with both of you. You're coming in at a time where the board was fairly divided, as you both know. And my hope is that this year is new. I emailed the whole board this morning, sharing that my hope with this change of two new members, that it would lead for us to working in collaboration. So if elected, I plan to do that, whether or not someone votes for me. So, thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi. Do we have any other comments? Seeing none? Seeing none, I'll make my comment. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, I think you absolutely deserve being president of the board. I think that if we talk about change, we need to change forward. We need to move forward, and you have been steadfast in that ability to take this district and the board in the right direction. I think that you are incredibly balanced with the way that you approach the, being on this board. I think that you have a integrity that the board needs. I think that you are able to work with staff and the superintendent, and you have shown that over and over again. I think that that is necessary. I think that we cannot have leadership that is contrary to the values of, of the majority of the board. So I will be voting for you tonight as president of the West Country Positively Unified School District Board of Education. I urge my colleagues to do the same. Thank you very much. All right, seeing no other comments, we are now headed to the vote. What we're gonna do is, we have to vote, and we vote in reverse. So we had two motions on the floor. So we take the last nomination first, and then we take the first nomination second. I reversed it. We, sorry, I reversed it. We take the first, first nomination that we had, which is Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, moving to president of the board. That's the one we're voting on now. Okay, everyone clear? We're voting on Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, moving to president of the board. Student trustee Espinoza Jr., your vote, sir.
Point, point of order. I think it's me first since I was the, no?
No, for nominations, you vote for the first nomination first, which is the opposite of how we usually deal with motions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, student trustee, student trustee Espinoza Jr., your vote, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Student trustee Wilson, your vote, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Student trustee, oh, I'm sorry. Board trustee Hernandez, your vote, ma'am?
No.
Uh, trustee Iniana, your vote, ma'am?
No.
Trustee Reckler, your vote?
No.
And I'm a yes. We are now moving on to the vote for, oh, I'm sorry, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, what's your vote for him?
Yes.
All right. We are now moving on. That motion failed. We are now moving on to the vote for trustee Reckler, moving to president of the board. Uh, trustee, student trustee Espinoza Jr., your vote?
No.
Student trustee Wilson, your vote?
Yes.
Student, uh, sorry. Board trustee Hernandez, your vote?
Yes.
Board trustee Iniana, your vote?
Yes.
Board trustee, trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
No.
And I'm a no. We are now moving on to, we have to take a minute. Uh, trustee Reckler, you are now president of the board, but we need a minute to move around. So we are gonna take a two-minute time to where we switch. I'll stay. Pass this. All right. Trustee Reckler is opting to stay in her position to make sure she's able to hear. Trustee Reckler, you are now.
On, thank you.
President of the board. Go ahead.
Thank you. Can anybody hear me?
No, they can't hear you.
Thank you. Can anybody hear me? Hello? You can hear me? No?
Thank you. Can anybody hear me? No.
Hello? Hello? They can't hear, the mics aren't working up here. Cameron, can you hear us? Okay. Well, you always can hear me, but can you hear everybody else? No?
Testing, testing.
Mic test, one, two, one, two. Mic test, one, two.
Testing.
Mic test, one, two.
I mean, after the Thank you. When the translator can hear me, please raise your hand. On translation.
Yes, I say.
Okay, okay. To the audience, I'm hearing impaired, so hard to hear within this evening. Distractions, do not mind for interruption, uh, interruption of the different notifications. So, I'm saying, we'll see about fixing everything so that I can operate in my own efficient, effective actions. Okay, we're moving to the election of the board clerk. Next, the certificate of the board for the 2025 calendar year. As the board secretary for the 2025 calendar year.
October eighth and twenty second, November five and nineteen, December three, December seventeen, January fourteen, January twenty eighth, February eleven, February twenty five, March eleven, March eighteen, a joint CBOS meeting of March twenty fifth, twenty twenty six, April fifteen, April twenty nine, May thirteenth, May twenty seven, June third, and June twenty four. They have a motion to accept these dates.
I motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I would like to put a second motion on the floor, or actually, I'd like to have discussion on this. So I just want to make sure a couple of things are clear on this. So in September, there would be two meetings one week apart, the tenth and the seventeenth. Does that make sense from operation standpoint?
We'd likely need more time in order to prepare a meeting. So I would suggest that we not have back-to-back weekly board meetings.
Is there a suggestion on a updated calendar for that? Or should we not vote on September and come back at the next meeting to decide that?
The version of the calendar that I have does not have seventeen listed. It has the tenth as the board meeting, and it has the joint CBOS meeting as September twenty fourth.
Okay, and the version that I printed has the tenth and the seventeenth. So we should strike the seventeenth? Okay. Okay, and then the second thing is in March of twenty twenty six, I have March eleven and eighteen, and then a joint CBOS meeting on March twenty fifth. Is that what you have reflected as well?
No, the calendar I have reflects March eleventh and twenty. March eleventh and March twenty fifth is board meetings. April fifteenth is a board meeting, April twenty ninth as a joint CBOS meeting.
Okay, that absolutely does not match what I have. Okay. So why don't we go ahead and, if it's okay, make a motion to adopt with only January eighth instead of the fifteenth, twenty twenty five, September ten, regular board meeting, joint CBOS meeting September twenty four, and then you have March eleven, twenty twenty six, joint CBS, uh, April fifteenth, and then a joint CBOS meeting on April twenty nine, twenty twenty six.
Yes, and a second meeting in March on the twenty fifth as well of that one. I didn't hear you call.
Okay. Okay, are we, are you guys clear on there on that? Okay. Okay. Then, moving on to establishing a board calendar for twenty twenty five, that includes a board organizational retreat, January eleven, twenty twenty five. I have a superintendent evaluation, April thirtieth of twenty twenty five. However, at the October twenty-third meeting of twenty twenty four, we made a motion so that there is a mid-year update no later than April one, twenty twenty five? So is this superintendent evaluation of April thirtieth um incorrect?
I'm not absolutely sure if there was an intention to do both, or if we should try to strike the April thirtieth. Um, I think I would leave that up to board leadership and how you'd like to handle that, but I do have the understanding that April first is a mid-year check-in.
Okay, so in the planning of this calendar, what was the intent around an evaluation on April thirtieth? Does anybody who set the calendar have an idea?
If I remember correctly, during our discussions about goal setting and evaluating goals, I believe that there was a discussion where the goals that were set in January would be evaluated at the end of April. Perhaps that's where that date came from.
So. Okay. Okay, so does the board have a preference on whether this mid-year evaluation is on April one, as previously motioned and approved, or on April thirtieth? Nobody has a opinion? Dr. Moses, what do you prefer?
Um, I think the the April thirtieth uh date would be more desirable for cabinet so that we can have adequate X um reporting for updates on goals for you at that time.
Okay. Then we'll stay with what's printed. Um, I have a budget here. After that, I have a budget hearing, June third, twenty twenty five. That is a Tuesday. Is that accurate?
Likely not. I don't think it was the intention of the calendar to change the traditional board dates, the board days.
Okay, so then the budget hearing would be June fourth, which would be regularly scheduled board meeting, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then I, I myself have a change that I would request, which is we have a board retreat on July twenty-six, twenty twenty five. I would love it if the board retreat were on July nineteenth, which is a Saturday. Dr. Moses, is that of any issue? At all? No?
No issue for me.
And then an annual organization meeting, December seventeen, twenty twenty five. Does anybody have any comments on the changes that were just discussed? May I have a motion to approve the adopted schedule as changed in this meeting?
Quiet order. A board retreat in January or no on there?
Yes, I do. The date I have is January eleventh, twenty twenty five.
January eleventh, twenty twenty five?
January January eleventh, twenty twenty five.
At that board meeting, are you going to have our anti-racist uh when you make the agenda? Are you able to have an anti-racist consultant come in at that time to train new board trustees as part of the retreat?
I will work with Dr. Moses to set the agenda.
Thank you. Please.
Okay, so back to, can I have a motion to approve the calendars as changed in this meeting? I'll go ahead and move it. Can I have a second?
My second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Student trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Student trustee Espinoza, Jr.?
Yes.
Trustee Inana?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoy?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Woo, okay, moving on to roll call. Dr. Moses, may I please have roll call?
Absolutely. Trustee Gonzalez Hoy?
Present.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Good evening, everyone. Present.
President Reckler?
Wow. Present.
Trustee Hernandez?
Present.
Clerk Inana?
Present.
Student trustee Espinoza?
Good evening, present.
Student trustee Wilson?
Present.
The roll call is complete.
Thank you. We're now moving to public comment. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board about any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda and is related to issues affecting public education in the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Public comment will last approximately sixty minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individual individuals wishing to speak must have been a WCC public comment form, or if participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in Zoom app prior to the beginning of this item on the agenda. Should public comment go past one hour, speakers will then be allotted one minute of time. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. You may begin.
Our first public comment is supervisor John Joya.
Good evening, I'm John Joya. I live in Richmond, and I'm proud to represent most of the school district, except Hercules on the Board of Supervisors. Uh, I just wanted to be brief on a couple of items. First, I want to acknowledge outgoing uh board members, uh, Mr. Phillips and authorie Christian. Just to say, there's been a strong partnership between the county and the school district, and I want to acknowledge their work. I want to also congratulate Jamila Smith Folds, uh, Lupe Inana, and Cynthia Hernandez on their election, and to say, we always stand ready to work together. Um, I want to continue the partnerships we have. Um, currently, the county is spending about four hundred thousand dollars a year to subsidize nonprofit youth groups to use your fields, uh, because we think that is a health policy that gets more youth groups to use uh your uh, your wonderful facilities. Second, uh, we have a partnership with the City of Richmond and School District to work together to improve the families and students at Lavagna de Jean Middle School, and we currently are funding through our social service department, a family navigator at Lavagna de Jean to help link uh link students and families to services. We also picked up the funding for the senior day programs that had been funded by your adult education program because of your needs to to really uh maintain funding. Uh, when you cut that funding, we picked it up using our Measure X dollars. Um, we also through our health department are providing health services, either through a mobile van or in some cases at schools, and we strongly believe that that we have one of the best partnerships around. So I, I, I'm, we stand committed to work with all of you um to continue those partnerships. Um, I've been co-chairing uh a systems collaborative change with city, school district, and uh the county, and look forward to continuing that as well. Finally, I just wanted to add my voice to the resolution in support of full funding at Stige for a rebuild at Stige. We, we will always do our part, and they deserve that. Um, they deserve that funding. Um, uh, and we appreciate and want to partner with the school district on how we help support other activities to help. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Anna. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. My name is Anna. I am a mother to a child currently at Vista. Um, as we consider the budget cuts going on, I do want to raise a little concern. I my son has been thriving at Vista. He did not thrive at, oh, Michelle Obama this last uh school year when he was in fourth grade. He is now in fifth grade. He's been at Vista for five months. He has improved in so many areas. He's meeting a lot of his IEP goals where he could not meet at a regular school study. Um, we have amazing teachers and an amazing principal who's also very involved in each IEP meeting, and also helping develop new plans for him to new goals for him to be able to to be successful in that thriving environment. The teacher does an amazing job in teaching the class. I am now seeing more and having so much communications, more than I did when he was in person. Cutting, cutting, um, cutting funding from Vista is only going to create less teachers for them. We already have small classrooms, but they're getting larger and larger. Each month, it feels like it's not going to be attainable to teachers to have such large classrooms and being able to support the students that they currently have. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Christopher McLean.
My name is Christopher McLean. I teach sixth grade uh DLI class in Dover Elementary School, and some staff and I came to represent Dover. So we are here to represent the families, students, and staff of Dover Elementary Community School. We represent and serve a beautiful community full of awesome students, family, and staff. With that being said, our community is also one of great need. Economically, culturally, and linguistically, we're on the margins. We are here to speak up about the resources and programs that our students in WCC USD need to continue receiving. The district and school board are not our enemies or antagonists. We should all be on the same team fighting hard for our schools, students, staff, and families. If there is an issue with staffing and funding, students should not be the ones who have to pay the price. If adults have been responsible for this issue, adults should come together to find a solution. Our students are innocent, and they deserve the world. We should not take any opportunities or resources from them. Programs like DLI are essential for newcomers to get accustomed to life and school in this country without being overwhelmed with language demands. Bilingualism is a superpower that gives us a cognitive advantage, as well as opens many doors for us. Receiving instruction in our mother tongue and obtaining proficiency is so empowering. It is a part of who we are. Rolling back DLI would deny thousands of students this opportunity. Not only that, but DLI is something that sets us apart from charter schools. We all recently found out that credentialed staff and personnel will be placed into the classroom. Many schools rely on their instructional coaches in so many different ways. Dover is one of the biggest elementary schools, yet we don't have a vice principal. Our instructional coach not only supports us to provide rigorous instruction, but also carries out many of the tasks a vice principal would do. Dover has a great reputation of reclassifying students. We moved English learners from red to blue on the dashboard in assessments over the past eight years. We had a high percentage in improvement. We also have one vacancy which has to be filled, which was filled by a substitute teacher.
Please conclude your comment.
Okay. Long story short, I just think that student, students, families, and staff should have a voice in any budget concerns. These programs that are affecting, that improve the students' educational outcomes should not be affected if we have.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, all. First, I'd like to say, um, Dr. Moses, um, I appreciate you stepping in, standing in the gap. Um, I think of us walking the halls of Kennedy High School, and I can only imagine how proud a number of our exceptional educators are of you and your education or your professional journey from Coach Alameda um to Coach Enos, to Ms. Mack, um, and just everything that they poured into us as young people who knew that it would take us where we are today. So I just want to say thank you for taking on this assignment and knowing that he prepared you for such a time as this. Um, I'm glad to see that they're, well, I'm kind of glad and kind of perplexed that now we have an anti-slur policy. And in a way, it's kind of unfortunate because in my classroom, my kids cannot use inappropriate language. And so I know that it takes, on average, thirty days to change a habit. And so because I love me, because I respect me, I'm not going to let my students speak in ways in my classroom to each other. Definitely not to me. That is rude, that is disrespectful, and that is a slur. Young people know what we allow them to do or what we teach them. And silence with this inappropriate language is not acceptable. And so, like I said, I'm kind of glad, and then it's kind of like, that makes no sense. Um, but it'll be interesting. I'm going to share this policy with my students. In closing, um, when I heard Iris Fold speak of her mom. So today I showed an Eric Thomas video to my students, and it was called Separate Yourself. And part of what he was saying is separate yourself is don't follow along, don't go with the crowd. But he also talked about the name that you carry. And what Iris showed is that she respects the name that she carries. And I also teach my students about respecting the name that you carry. Yes, my maiden name is Harris, but the one that moves me the most is my mom, who gave thirty years to this country in the United States Air Force. So everybody have a wonderful blessed holiday season, relax and rejuvenate, and I look forward to seeing you in twenty twenty five.
Our next public comment is Salon Harrison. Salon Harrison? Next public comment is Genoveva Callaway.
Good evening, everybody. Buenas tardes a todos. Buenas noches casi. My name is Genoveva Callaway. I'm a former city council and mayor for the city of San Pablo, and I'm here tonight to thank our two outgoing um board members, and then also to welcome and congratulate the three newly elected officials um this past November, and also to um offer my help to all the board members and to also thank you for your public service. I now, my, my great-granddaughter is at Downer Elementary. They just had a student council, and she ran for president, and she got elected. So I'm very involved at Downer Elementary School as a great-grandmother. I thought I was finished with school, but hey, the next generation is important. So anyways, I just want to introduce myself. I haven't been here for a long time, but I plan to continue working uh with the board and with the staff. So I hope you allow community input in the search for the new superintendent. That's very important. I know it's on the consent. I don't know what the composition is, but I'd like to ask that a community member or members be part of the, of the process. Thank you very much, and happy holidays to everybody.
Our next public comment is David Baylou. Please unmute yourself.
I wanted to say, uh, welcome to our two uh new board members. Um, we have a uh district that's uh has a lot of passionate uh parents and teachers and staff, uh, but also a lot of challenges ahead of us. Uh, also, the following statement is on behalf of the Harding PTA. Um, the Harding PTA would like the WCC USD board to support the following. Uh, a real, a more aggressive district-wide campaign to promote and stress the importance of attendance at each of our schools. This is the factor that we, as parents, uh, can collectively have the single biggest impact on. Uh, we would also like uh to encourage the board to uh make statements affirming the budget realities presented by the Budget Office. It's apparent, it's imperative that uh parents and all stakeholders understand the importance of adhering uh to a fiscal solvency plan so we can maintain local control. Um, we would also like the board uh to agendize a vote on reinstating our Area Five trustee Leslie Reckler to board-level committees. Area Five schools deserve to have the voice of their elected official present on committees. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Don Gosny.
Good evening. If you've attended as many city council and school board meetings as I have over the decades, there's a recurring theme that we frequently see with those elected to represent us. They forget who they swore to represent. Even before we had a district elections, we suffered with this problem. But now that we have our representatives based on the district they live in, it's far worse. We have two new elected board members to be sworn in tonight, as well as an incumbent. My advice tonight is not limited to the newly elected board members. It's meant for all of you. When you were elected by the good people of Area Six, it doesn't mean that you only represent the people of Area Six. It doesn't mean that you become the queen or king of Area Six. It means that you were elected by the good people of Area Six to represent everyone living in the West Contra Costa Unified School District. We have nearly two hundred and seventy thousand people living in West County that you are sworn to represent. One of my favorite sayings is, how can you claim to represent the people when you never speak with the people? What that means is that when any of the two hundred and seventy thousand people you swore to represent sends you an email, a text, a letter, or gives you a call, they expect a response. They're entitled to a response. It doesn't matter who sits in those chairs. What the WCC USD Board of Education is famous for is their failure to respond when the people they swore to represent reaches out to them. How can you honestly vote for, for or against an item when you have zero idea what your two hundred and seventy thousand constituents think about an item? You all know me. I've worked with you all one way or another to get you elected. I've raised money for your campaigns. I've served on numerous committees over the decades. I frequently speak at meetings. I mail and email you volumes of information and try to advise you based on the lengthy and extensive history I have with the district. And what do I get in return? Silence. For instance, I've tried to advise you all about siege for six or seven years, but you still allowed it to become the major problem it is today. If you treat me this way, I wonder how you might treat those of your constituents that are less involved. How about if we turn a new page in this book and remember who you swore?
Our next public comment is Maria Resendis. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, good evening. Congratulations on your new post to the new members of the board. It is wonderful to see women the, leading the way. The community needs you. You will be asked to make difficult decisions ahead. We have a huge deficit, and we need to have those conversations. But today is a day of celebration. Just remember that you will be asked to make these decisions that it will impact the whole community. Not just for now or the next couple of years when you're elected, but this impacts last generations. I've been here more than thirty years. Have four children who have gone through the district, and I still see the same issues. When these crowds come to your way, please take the time to communicate with, with us, your community. We are ready to support you. Please listen and ask for help. We are ready to help. You just need to involve us and engage with us. Just remember, keep the well-being of children as your north star. Do not let ego sneak in, as these will be your legacy. We need strong leadership. Felicidades, congratulations. And I'm here to support you every step of the way, every single one of you. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Harpreet Sandhu.
Good evening, Madam President, Trustee President. Um, Harpreet Sandhu, I'm the senior district representative for Congress John Garmendy. Congressman wishes to one thank the outgoing trustees and congratulate the new elected uh trustees here, uh, Jamila Smith Folds, trustee of Lupe Elana, and trustee Cynthia Hernandez. Congressman, as mentioned before by our supervisor, on a federal level, we look forward to working with you in any capacity that we can, and especially the funding that is perhaps most important as you bring to this, to our school district and the district as a whole. The next couple of years are going to be challenging, and we are going to make sure that our children are not left behind, that everything possible happens we can for our district. And uh, in that, it's, it's, uh, it's our first priority. I um also want to thank that, you know, usually when we make statements and we come up here, we reflect on the past, on a momentous time that has uh happened many, many years ago. But this week, we've seen, uh, I've had witnessed many different city council meetings, new members elected, and here too. It truly, um, there's no need to go back. The future is today and, and now. So it is truly amazing that our cities, our counties, our school boards reflect the people that we are here today. So we are amazed and, and, and at, at where this country is headed. Um, I also want to make sure that I, um, early on, when there was uh meetings occurred on Skies, Stige School, we were engaged. And uh, we and, and, and the congressman wants to make sure that our children go back to a wonderful facility that is new and brand-new for them to go back as soon as possible. So uh, welcome to the new trustees, and we look forward to working with on federal issues that we can. Thank you very much.
Our next public comment is Eric Hughes. Please unmute yourself. Our next public comment is Eric Hughes. Please unmute yourself.
All right. Hello, Dr. Moses. Hi, trustees of the board. It was very nice to see some of you in person and I'm glad that I got to get home in time to make this comment. I just wanted to speak briefly about Vista Virtual. When I first started working at WCC USD as an education specialist. Special education was a place where students were sent to. It was a place for challenging students to go. At Vista Virtual, it is a a service where students receive. There's already been some comments from families talking about how their students have been able to flourish in this environment. And the thing that comes to me the most is especially that that situation at first where special education was a space people were sent to. That's not it at Vista. Families choose Vista. They choose Vista because the traditional school hasn't worked for them. And they they've tried and so they want their student to succeed. They've tried Vista and so many of these students are seeing their their families and their students flourish in ways where the traditional school had been the cage that had kept them from spreading their wings. So please, I I understand that there are deficits and budget cuts and I know all of this is true. But taking any of these teachers away from these students at Vista would be devastating devastating to their educational development. Thank you and I yield back the rest of my time.
Our next public comment is Benjamin Platt. Benjamin Platt. Ramon Ramirez.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to congratulate the new members of the board and everybody for allowing me to do this. I have a situation right across, right across the street. My wife actually owns business. And it's, I know we have a problem throughout the city homeless. But in this situation, there's kids right across the school and it's getting really dangerous. They've been there for a couple of years now and they actually the size of the people is growing. You can, you sometimes you can even walk on the sidewalk. They have garbage, bicycles, carts and people. Pedestrians, also the kids when they get out and they come into school, sometimes they will have to walk on the incoming traffic and it's getting there, it's getting pretty bad. I was hoping that maybe the school board. I'm also going to also try to talk to CD, the CDC if they can help us out to try to, you know, get rid of this because it is getting kind of dangerous for everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak. That's all I just want to say. And felicidades a todos. Have a good night.
Thank you. If I can interrupt for just a minute, Dr. Moses, would you be able to get have a designee just get his name and phone number or email so that contact could be made? Thank you.
Our next public comment is Goldie Williams. Please unmute yourself. Goldie Williams?
Yeah, good evening. Thank you very much. Good evening, board members and interim superintendent. Congratulations to our newest board members and thank you to our existing members. It's time for change. Let's work together and get into some good trouble together. I'll be reading an email that I sent to the board. Dear WCC USD School Board Members. Tonight's vote on the rebuild of Siege Elementary is not just about bricks and mortar. It is about justice, equity, and the future of our children. For years, Siege Elementary has been at the mercy of decisions that have moved it down the priority list, leaving the school and its students underserved. This school, which is which has the largest population of black and African American students in the district, has faced unimaginable challenges. Students in hideous conditions that ultimately forced the closure of the building and now an interim location that is still far from adequate. The message this sends to these children and their families is one of disregard. One that says their education and environment matter less. As leaders entrusted with the well-being and development of all students, it is our district tonight that you have the power to change that narrative. These students deserve better. They deserve the same opportunities and resources that other schools in our district receive. A rebuilt Siege Elementary is more than a facility. It is a promise that their education and future matter. It is a commitment to providing a safe, nurturing and inspiring space where they can thrive. I ask you to reflect on the significance of this vote. Which side of history will you choose to stand on? Which side of history will you choose to stand on? The side that perpetuates inequity or the side that boldly addresses it? Tonight, you have the chance to make a statement to these students, their families and our community. That all children deserve a quality education in an in an environment that supports their growth and success. Please vote to rebuild Siege Elementary. Let's ensure that equity is more than a value that we talk about, but it's one that we act upon. Sincerely, Goldie Williams, community advocate. And regarding the search for the new superintendent, it is not a request but an expectation that the community will be included and involved and we will follow a path of equity for the search. Thank you all for your time.
Our next public comment is Carol Peters. Next public comment is Amanda Foster.
Good evening, all. For the new folks, welcome and congratulations. I spoke last school year at multiple meetings. I'm speaking to you tonight as a school district further attempts to dismantle the Vista family of schools. I have twenty one wonderful fifth graders learning with me this year. They all come to Vista for their own unique reasons. Each reason is valid. We laugh, we share and we learn together. When I consider the murky future of our program, my thoughts go to the students I and my colleagues work with that have physical or mental health challenges, visible and invisible disabilities. Any cuts to Vista is ableist. Cutting an education model that is vital to vulnerable students is ableist. Vulnerable students who, for whatever reason, cannot physically be present in a traditional classroom setting or students who need flexibility and additional support in their academic journey. You will lose students from this school district. You must know, most won't return to your classrooms. They will join other programs that meet their needs. This program could be bringing in students from districts within our county and from adjacent counties. We could be a safe haven and a healing place of learning for more students, but we aren't getting the support from the district. We appreciate the first efforts to learn about our program, but I ask that you continue to learn because there is more to know. Vista is an asset to this district and we can be an even greater one. I'm honored to speak tonight on behalf of my students and my community. I have had three parents contact me that their tech issues and delays have made them leave Zoom and they are unable to speak tonight. I hope you hear our spoken and unspoken pleas. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Hector Garcia. Please unmute yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Hector Garcia. I'm a parent of a student at an Vista High School. I was just concerned about first of, well, first of all, one wanted to thank, congratulate Jamila Smith Foles, Lupe and Cynthia and outgoing staff of the school board. Congratulations. My second, you know, the, as I was going, talking about the land Vista, I was concerned about the cuts. I don't know what the details of the proposed cuts, but that's, it would be, it would be drastic, you know, to lose to reduce the whatever the budget on that school because they're extremely helpful. McCormick is extremely helpful. All the staff there is extremely helpful. The school, everybody there is very, very supportive and especially after the COVID, the whole COVID situation, the students that are coming back, returning. It's really, it's been a really hard situation to adjust, you know, and with mental health challenges and a lot of other personal issues. So they, it's just, it would be so drastic, you know, thinking about what could happen, you know, with where all the students, what's going to happen, you know, all the students, where are they going to go, where? You know, and just the trauma, you know, of the students thinking just right now about what could happen, you know. You know, hearing that there might be cuts that, you know, knowing that we're, you know, think having them thinking about that, just it's, you know, it's not good, you know, for their mental health and stuff and, you know, losing the school and, you know. So I I just really want you guys to consider reconsider about, you know, not not making any budget cuts to the school, you know, because it's it's a really vital part of our community of our West Contra Costa Unified School District community and, you know, so important to have Vista there. So please, please reconsider, you know. You know, so important to have that school.
Our next public comment is Fred Powell. Fred Powell. Kim Jones. Oh.
Good evening, board. How is that? My name is Fred Powell. And I am president of Powell and Partners Architects. I'm here to speak in favor of Stige Elementary School. One of the reasons is because we are the original architect who worked on Stige to design and develop construction documents back in two thousand and ten. And we completed ninety five percent of those design documents about four years later because we we completed a master plan and then detailed design. My firm has worked in seven different school districts. We've worked at a couple of community colleges and for UC Berkeley. We're currently working with Paralta Community College on a couple of projects. We've been working with them for about, I don't know, fourteen, fourteen years or so. We not only do educational projects, we also do residential, office buildings, hospitals. And we've done some churches. So we are generalists. Anyway, I would just want to conclude to say that we have the contract for Stige and we would love to continue to complete the project if you allow us to. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Rodney Brown. Please unmute yourself.
I'd like to say good evening, board. This is Rodney Yalimo Brown, the community advocate here in the city of Richmond, California. I want to say congratulations to those who have made it on the board, who will now be serving our community in the best interest and love. And those who are departing, I wish you well in your future endeavors. I'm here to speak, I'm here tonight to speak about Stige Elementary School. And as we all know, this has been an undaunting task to get this mission complete. Our children deserve the best. I don't think we should be squabbling moving forward about the enrollment of children that's at Stige currently. And there's an old movie that I like to watch and it's called The Field of Dreams. There was a line in that movie that said, if you build it, they will come. I'm more than certain with Stige being a brand new campus, that the children who have vaulted elsewhere will return back into the fold. We ask tonight that the board consciously make a decision to make sure that Stige is built by voting yes. I'm more than certain there's individuals within the sector of our community who don't want to see this done. However, that's a shame that any human being would think that it's not okay for Latino and black children to have a wonderful campus environment to learn that. Ms. Moses, you were once a principal there and you know exactly what transpired when you were there. And although you can't vote tonight, I'm sure you can sympathize with everyone who's been speaking on behalf of Stige as well as myself this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, your future as well as your legacy hangs in the balance tonight. Let's do the right thing in the honor of God and make sure that our children have a wonderful, wonderful campus to engage themselves in. I wish you all well. Good night. Shalom.
Our next public comment is Kim Jones. Kim Jones. Sue Wilson.
Hi, my name is Sue Wilson. I'm a Richmond resident and I'm also recently elected to the Richmond City Council in District Five, which contains Stige Elementary. I want to, I want to say that I wholeheartedly support the idea of a full rebuild of Stige. And I encourage the board tonight to take decisive action to approve a full rebuild at Stige to 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 make the money available to do it and to sign off on a development contract so that this work can get started. There's been a number of speakers already and I'm sure there'll be more. The the community has done an incredible job, I think, of organizing their support for a full rebuild at Stige. And I hope that you will take it seriously, what they're saying and what I'm saying is that it really is a question of equity and fairness and that the kids in Richmond. Stige is overwhelmingly a minority majority school and those kids deserve the same wonderful facilities to learn in as all the other kids in West Contra Costa Unified School District. And I I think that's something that is hopefully not controversial, so I won't, I won't take up more of your time. But again, thank you and congratulations to the newly elected board members and to the reelected board members. And I hope that we can do the right thing tonight and do a full rebuild at Stige.
Our next public comment is Erin Calantine. Please unmute yourself.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I wanted to join in congratulating the new and returning board members and thanking all of the board members for their service. I am an eighteen-year teacher in West Contra Costa. I have only taught in West Contra Costa. And after learning that the board was considering cutting four programs that directly affect our most vulnerable students, including my own school community of the last ten years. I felt that it was very important to come and frankly reiterate, especially what Ms. Foster said. We are a school that serves students who physically and for many health reasons, amongst many other reasons, are not and will not return to a school that is a brick and mortar school if we close their school. We'll just lose them and we will lose their amazing community. We will lose their support. And it is very possible that they will not be able to find a community-centered school that is as good and as amazing as ours is. I do not teach in the virtual side, so I feel great hyping them up. They do amazing work with students who would not find the same kind of home and the same kind of community in another school. Like with students who are too sick to return to school, with students who are rebuilding their immune systems after horrendous illness. With students who are rebuilding their physical bodies after multiple surgeries. Just please, please consider that we are offering an option that people want. Allowing more people to make use of this option, allowing us to market it to other students who are like our students who could really benefit would be a benefit to all of us. Thank you very much.
That concludes public.
Thank you, everyone, for making public comment. We are now moving to item.
We are now moving to item B eleven, Agenda Review and Adoption. Is there, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, I have a few. The first one is that I would like to uh, ask if we can move G, comments from the Board of Education and future agenda items up next so that our two new trustees can make comments on their election. Next is, I would like to reorder the action items. I would like to have E three, which is increasing the project budget and approve the contract for design and construction of Stige, move up ahead of the resolution, E two and E four. And then I'd like to know, Dr. Moses, do we have to hear the WCCUSD Measure T item tonight? Or is it possible to take that off for another meeting?
The Measure T item. Um, we have an obligation to hear this audit prior to January first. If, if we remove it, we won't meet that deadline.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll, then we'll leave it. Does anybody else have any adjustments to the agenda?
I'd like to ask that we pull item B, sorry, item C ten, ratification of negotiated bond change orders. There are some clerical errors on the document that we'd like to correct and bring back to you in January.
Thank you. Let's just wait a minute until we get to the consent items. Okay. Also, I understand that B thirteen, the resolution in support of all students, staff and families regarding race and gender was supposed to be pulled as well?
No, but we do have a change to the resolution.
You do? Okay. So if it's okay, if we can pull that and bring that back in January at the first meeting?
That changes just, uh, three words.
Okay. Okay, so with the board's consent to reorder E, uh, E G, having comments from the board first, then moving to E two, the resolution, uh, I'm sorry, in three, to move up the presentation on Stige before the resolution. And are there any objections to that?
Point of order. Why are we moving G again?
Because the board members have family here and people that wanna hear them. Yeah, if that's okay. Okay, seeing none. So trustee Anjana, would you like to put two minutes on the clock to speak?
Okay, good evening. Today is a day of reflection and hope, reflection on how far we've come and hoping for the bright future we will continue to build together. Our journey has not been without challenges. We faced adversity and struggle with deep, with deep systematic issues that we have impacted our children and families. But with every challenge, we have learned, grown and gotten stronger. We are at a critical turning point for our schools, for our families and for our city. There's a reality we must acknowledge. Our district faces immense fiscal challenges and there are schools like Stige where students have been subject to unsafe and unfair conditions for far too long. But we are not afraid. We will confront these issues with determination, compassion and relentless drive to do what is right for our children. I am committed and ensuring that we will build the district where our children safely, where our children's safety is a priority, where every student has resources they need to succeed and families and educators feel heard, valued and supported. This is a promise we must fulfill and I will do everything in my power to see it through. The work, uh, one of the first and more urgent priorities will be to initiate the search for new superintendent. A leader who could bring fresh energy and a clear vision to guide this district forward. Our schools need leadership that is transparent, accountable, deeply connected to our community. We will work together to ensure that the next superintendent is someone who shares our values and understands the unique challenges and opportunities we face here in Contra Costa. But leadership, leadership doesn't just come from the top. It comes from each of us. It comes from the parents who show up at school board meetings, from the teachers who give everything to our students and from the students themselves to continue to inspire me every day with the resilience and determination. As we move forward, it is vital that we continue to listen to one another. Our community has a wealth of knowledge, ideas and passion and it is my job to ensure that every voice is heard, whether it's through town halls, parent meetings, community forums. I will always be available to listen and work hard for all of you.
Trustee Hernandez, do you have comments?
Yes.
We'll put two minutes on the clock for you.
As a product of West Contra Costa Unified School Districts, I know firsthand the challenges and the opportunities that come with growing up in this district. I'm proud to be from here and I carry that pride with me every step of the way I take. As I work to serve our students and families, I'm committed to continue to grow and to, uh, make sure we all come to, I'm so sorry. Um, sure that we are transparent with our families and students and continue to serve our families. I'm also dedicated to, uh, creating more access to our families and creating resources and making sure our families are, um, walking with us every step of the way. The road ahead will not be easy, but it's one that we must all travel together. And I will continue to serve our community as best as possible and continue to strive for transparency and accountability. Thank you.
Student trustee Wilson, do you have comments?
On the new elects?
We've moved up item G, which are few, which are comments for the evening so that it could accommodate the new trustees. So if you have anything that you would normally say at the end of the meeting, you can make those comments now.
Okay. Well, I didn't pay anything, but, uh, it's a pleasure to meet both of you. And, uh, as I only have a couple of meetings here, I hope to use that time wisely with you two and to get to know you more. And good luck with the future four years ahead.
Trustee Espinoza Junior, do you have any comments?
I do. Thank you. Congratulations, Señora Hernandez and Señora Anjana. Congratulations. It is an honor to spend my last few weeks here serving alongside with you guys as a student. It is a pleasure. Um, I'm excited to what not only you guys bring, but to see the progress that I, not only me and Wilson will be able to make alongside with you guys, but what we can leave for the next oncoming student trustees and the trustees from every region here. So thank you.
Trustees Smith Folds, do you have any comments?
Could you come back to me, please?
Sure. Trustee Gonzalez, do you have any comments?
Thank you, yes. Um, first, I wanna thank everybody who's come in support of the Stige item. Uh, I'm really excited that staff was able to work so incredibly hard in finding the additional funds needed for a full rebuild. Uh, I was gonna make this comment at the end after hopefully the passing of the resolution, but I hope that tonight we're able to give the Stige community what they've been asking for, which is a full rebuild of Stige Elementary School. Um, and I'm really excited that we're having this resolution come forward tonight and hopefully that we'll have enough transparent and open process for the rebuild. Uh, that includes families, students and staff and larger, larger community as well. So I encourage my colleagues tonight to vote that forward. I think it would send a huge message if it's a unanimous vote, um, for everyone and for the future of this school that truly deserves it. And connected to this item, just one advice that I wanna give all of us is that when we transition to area trustees, some people took that to heart. And as we heard from Mr. Glasner tonight, some people believe that they only represent their area and therefore only advocate for their area. We gotta remember that we're sitting here on behalf of twenty-nine thousand students. And the most marginalized areas might not be the ones that you represent. And it's okay to advocate for those areas, even if it means you might not get votes in your area in the future because you're doing the right thing. So I just wanna encourage us all to think in that direction, or at least majority of us. Because our students who are Black and Brown, that look like majority of the board, are the ones that are continuously hurting by decisions that we make. So I'll just leave us there, uh, which is why I'm also supportive of Stige, even though it's not in my area. Thank you.
Trustee Smith Folds, do you have comments?
We are headed into the holiday break on Friday or before. Please remember when you are giving things, uh, tokens of appreciation. Move away from flowers and mugs. Teachers, support staff, aides, administrators and volunteers want and need gift cards. So please lean in that direction. Have a wonderful holiday break and we'll see you back in the new year. I am complete.
Thank you. And for me, I wanna thank everybody for their unbelievable hard work this year. It was very, very difficult and I appreciate all of you for everything that you put in. I wanna thank outgoing board leadership. I wanna thank Dr. Moses for stepping in. I wanna thank our new trustees for running and being seated and for your bravery. And I want us all to grow and to work together for students. Everybody, please enjoy your break and come back in two thousand twenty-five. Ready to rock. Thank you. Moving now to B twelve, which would be the minutes, approval of the minutes of October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Does anybody have any corrections to the minutes? I do. I have one small thing which I'll send in, which is on the motion to approve the superintendent's contract. There was a date change in the evaluation. It was no later than April first, two thousand twenty-five. That was the mid-year evaluation. We, of course, overrode that tonight. It will be April thirtieth. But for the record, I will vote, I will send in that we approved in April one, two thousand twenty-five with that motion. Okay, moving now to B thirteen, Resolution Number two thousand four, two thousand five, dash, five, four, in support of all our students, staff and families, regardless of race, gender, identity, gender expression, sexual orientation or immigration status.
President, this is my item. Are you okay if I introduce it?
Yes, please go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, so this item board, we actually passed a similar resolution in two thousand sixteen when the incoming Trump administration was making a lot of, um, uh, arguments and a lot of, there were, it was creating a narrative of anti-immigration, anti-Latino community. So this resolution was created in collaboration with various community organizations that work, do work around that piece. Um, and we asked the board at the time to pass it to reinforce what our district stands for, which sometimes is an opposition of what we're hearing in the national narrative, including, and very importantly, uh, procedures in case ICE is sent to schools or they are in our school district and they target, uh, Latino families or Latino students. Therefore, at the time, we called it a sanctuary resolution. The Governance Committee met for a few months to review something similar or review that, that resolution. But we wanted to grow this resolution to include other groups that have been targeted by the incoming administration. Uh, and that includes, uh, individuals with special needs, Black and Brown individuals, individuals, uh, with a different gender identity or expression or sexual orientation and a recommend, a commitment on public education. So if you were to look at the item, you will see there are two drafts, one a clean copy and one a copy with the changes of what we added. One of the things that we missed in this resolution was in page two, on the second whereas, where it lists different groups that have been targeted, um, in the last few months with national narrative. It was supposed to include Jewish, the Jewish faith, which has been targeted, uh, nationally and internationally. So it's supposed to read, whereas the West Contra Costa Unified School District is committed to protecting, protection of all traditional marginalized students, including students of Arab descent, those of Muslims, Sikh, Jewish and other faiths. So that was the, the mis, one mistake. And the second, which was brought up to us this week, was that we also missed writing antisemitism in the first, be it further resolved on the third page. Because we also know, like I just mentioned, that the Jewish community has been targeted, uh, including some of our students, staff or families who are part of that religion. So I wanted to suggest that we add those two changes. I'm sure we might have missed more things and this has to grow. But this resolution, even though it's incredibly long, and I was gonna read all the therefore be it resolves, but because of time, it's two pages long, just a bit, therefore be it resolves. I believe it's a sentiment, an expression of what we believe and what we won't allow in our district, which is an attack on marginalized communities. Therefore, um, I'll pass it back to the president. Um, that's the introduction. And I did, sorry, I did wanna mention a couple of things. There's been student, religious and other community organizations that have been providing feedback for the last few months in this resolution. Uh, so there, there's been a large group of people working on this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Seeing none, would you like to put a motion on the floor?
Yes, thank you. I would like to move that we approve Resolution Number two, four, two, five, dash, five, four, in support of all of our students, staff and families, regardless of race, gender, identity, gender expression, sexual orientation, immigration status, with the inclusion of the word Jewish in the second whereas of the second page and the word, and the word antisemitism on the first, be it further resolved on the third page. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I second.
Is there comment from board members? Well, I'd like to comment. I'd like to thank you for that because I was feeling very left out of that. And it has been extremely difficult for the Jewish community for the last year. We haven't talked about antisemitism and the trauma that has happened to Jewish families and those of us who have a connection to Israel. And I'm very glad just to, and we should and we will because there's a lot of work that needs to be done around that topic as well. But I'm very grateful that that was included and I thank you for it. With that, we'll go to a vote. Student trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Student trustee Espinoza Junior?
Yes.
Trustee Anjana?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, why?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The item passes. Okay, moving to consent. Are there any, uh, consent items that board members would like to pull?
President Regler, I'd like to pull, um, item C ten, ratification of negotiated bond change orders in order to make clerical changes and bring back in January.
Okay, so I would like to pull C one, Superintendent's Search Board Committee. I would like to pull C five, ratified contracts. I would like to pull C eighteen, non-discrimination policy. And C ten will be tabled off this agenda, returning when?
First meeting in January.
First meeting in January, okay. Does anybody have any issues with that? Would you like to vote or can we just approve it as is? Okay. Consent is done. Moving to D, Superintendent Communication?
I'm sorry, President. May I do a point?
Yes, of course.
I was wondering, with permission of the superintendent, if we could potentially move the reports after the Stige items, since there's so many people waiting here.
I'm fine with that. Okay, let's go to E. If I could do E one, just the variable term waiver, that'll take one second and then we'll If I could do E1, just the variable term waiver, that'll take one second and then we'll, Stige is up. This one's important. This means someone in the classroom.
Good evening.
I'm sorry, E1, Dr. Johnson, do you want to do your variable term waiver and get that out of the way?
Yes, President Regler, thank you for that. Good evening, Board, and welcome new board members. Um, the variable term waiver authorizes a school district to assign teachers based on their subject matter knowledge. And we have one employee for this waiver. Questions?
Okay, that was quick. Okay, do we have any public comments on this item? Okay, do we have any?
There's no public comment.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
President, I move that we approve the variable term waivers.
I'll second. Is there any comment from board members? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Student trustee Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
Student trustee Espinoza?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Inana?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalezoi?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, item passes. Okay, the moment we've been waiting for. Ms. Payne, may I ask you please to present E3 first, which is increase the project budget and prove contract for the design and construction of the Stige Elementary School Replacement Project between the West Contra Costa Unified School District and Alton Construction LLC.
Yes, good evening, um, Board, Superintendent, and Community. Um, it's my pleasure to stand here in front of all of you tonight, representing a team and the full community. I wanted to start with a quote before we jump right in. It's something that I carry around in my purse with me everywhere I go. And it says, "To accomplish great things, we must not only act, but also dream; not only plan, but also believe." And so I stand before you tonight, next slide, recommending the approval of the agreement for the design and construction services for the Stige Elementary School full rebuild with the design builder Alton Construction. Next slide. So we're gonna take a quick look at how, um, we've moved to this position that we're in today. It was back in February that the Board approved the design build procurement. In September, we issued a request for qualifications and proposals. We received those proposals and what they told us is what it would cost for the full rebuild of Stige to be equitably built pursuant to the education specifications similar to Lake Elementary School. Once we understood what that cost was, we needed to find the additional dollars. And so we stand here before you tonight with that presentation. Should the Board approve the project budget increase and the contract tonight, we will remain on schedule to occupy the brand-new Stige Elementary School in the fall of 2027. Next slide. Just a quick reminder about design builds. Uh, we did come before the Board in February and the Board did approve the design build procurement. The legislature actually identifies the benefits of design build in the actual ed code. I love to read statute. So I'm gonna share with you what the legislature said when they created design build and opened it up to K-12 school districts. They said that it's a delivery method that can reduce project costs, expedite completion, and create design features that aren't achievable through design bid builds. Stige Elementary School Full Campus Rebuild is a project that, uh, design build serves the goals and the needs, um, of the project. And so in this instance, we will have a design builder, which means that the architect and the builder, they're one entity that work together. It's a collaborative project model. Next slide. The best value, uh, design builder is Alton Construction. They are also the design builder for Lake Elementary School. They're on Zoom with us tonight, headquartered here in Richmond, California, with over 25 years of construction services. They've done more than 15 design build projects. And the architect that is on this design build team that will be, um, designing this project in close collaboration with the community is Perkins Eastman, a leader in 21st century design. They were the team that put together the education specifications, um, for suite design, also a local vendor. Next slide. The contract that's before you tonight does include suite design. We like to call that learner-responsive design. It's flexible. Um, and while you see here some renderings of what that could look like, we're at the very beginning of what will be a long, but also expedited process and one that's gonna be done in collaboration with the community. Next slide. So you see here, for the progressive design and construction services contract, it is $51 million. That will include the demolition of the existing campus as well as all of the services for the design and construction of the full rebuild. In order to complete a construction project, it takes a team and there's a lot of people on that team. A lot of these team members are required by statute and other requirements. And so a lot of times, we call our construction team the hard cost and we call the surrounding services the soft cost. And so that would include things like the Division of State, um, inspector. It would include the testing labs, um, and all of the consultants that it takes to make sure that the project is designed, um, and built pursuant to all of the requirements. And so we anticipate using historical data for previous design build projects that, um, it, we need $10 million to support those soft cost fees for the project. Next slide. So when we look at the cost of design build services, 51 million, the budget for the supporting soft costs, which are required to complete the project, we need a project budget of $61 million. We currently have a $43 million Board-approved budget for Stige. And so the gap is 18 million. Next slide. So how do we cover the gap? Well, it's something that we've been working on, uh, very closely, um, for about a month, um, to make sure that we have the dollars to move this forward. And there's a couple of strategies that we're using. One of them is a strategy that we've been using since 2016. And that is when there is a completed project, meaning the Board has approved a scope and a budget and we have completed that project, that we return those project savings to the fund balance for another project. That item is on the agenda tonight as E4. I want to be clear that the projects that are represented there, they have all been completed. And so we are not asking for dollars to be returned from projects that are currently active. So the project savings that we are asking the Board to approve tonight to reallocate to Stige are from completed projects. The next item is the state facilities program. This is state dollars, state dollars that we have been aggressively pursuing for many, many years, um, to the tune of almost $230 million to date. We are currently standing in line for almost $17 million more dollars. But we can't stand in line for additional dollars until we have a DSA-approved set of documents. And so the applications you see there are probably reminiscent of projects that are currently active under construction or recently completed. As soon as we have a DSA-approved set for Stige, we will also go stand in line. The dollars that you see there, the 16.7, all of those dollars are within the Prop 2 authority. So Prop 2 was approved by voters in November and so there are now dollars at the state again. So as these applications get approved, additional dollars will come to the district in the future. And we're gonna continue to aggressively pursue all of the different funding opportunities. I do really want to acknowledge and thank local partners. We did have a meeting a couple of months ago. Um, Board leadership called a meeting with partners and we talked about how do we make it happen? And so there are other opportunities for funding and we are going to explore all of them because we have so many needs in our community and we want to bring as many dollars as we can here to West Contra Costa. The last strategy that we're using is that with our facilities dollars, there are different types of facilities dollars and they all come with a different set of restrictions. One of the restricted facility funds that we have is, uh, if you look it up in the California School Accounting Manual, it's called the Capital Facilities Fund. Uh, if we're talking about it in the office, we call it Fund 25. And if you're talking about it, uh, more colloquial, it's probably called developer fees. And what it is, is that when there are developments within our community, there is a fee that is paid, a residential and commercial fee that is paid for that development. The idea being that when we have development within our boundaries, that that can lead to new families and new students and new students need a seat. And so we use those dollars to fund those seats, which means when we have Fund 25 or developer fees revenue, we have to use it with a nexus for growth. One of the demonstrated growths that we have in our district is our transitional kindergarten facilities. So those are new seats. Those are seats that didn't previously exist in our district. And so they meet the very restrictive requirements of Fund 25. So part of our strategy to ensure that we have enough funds in the bank today to move forward with this contract for Stige and a project budget that can support the full rebuild is to use our Fund 25 developer fees to fund the transitional kindergarten facilities that are being built at Lake now and the transitional kindergarten facilities that we will build for Stige. By using those very restrictive fees to fund that particular portion of those projects, it will free up additional bond dollars that we can use towards this project budget. Next slide. So in conclusion, um, I'm a quote person. Um, and I, I want to finish with a quote, but I borrowed this quote from a community advocate, one who called into the meeting tonight. Um, Ms. Goldie Williams said at the November 2023 meeting, when the Board approved increasing Stige's budget from a critical needs project of 2.9 million to a modernization budget of 43 million. She said, "This is not a project, it's our lives." I'm an emotional person, you gotta give me a second. And the effects are the vision our students will see in themselves.
Yes.
I stand here tonight with a staff's recommendation to increase the project budget from a modernization budget of 43 million to a full campus rebuild budget of 61 million. And to award the design build contract to the design builder Alton Construction on the line, along with Perkins Eastman. I also stand here with a commitment on behalf of our entire team that we are listening, that we want to work together, and that we will. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. We're gonna move to public comment on item E3, which would be to increase the project budget. One minute on the clock.
First public comment is Don Gosney.
Before you run me out of here on the rail, I stand behind a total rebuild for Stige and have for more than 15 years. But I had information to share, but it can't do it in just one minute. Between our inability to converse with you as, as our elected leaders and our inability to speak here, it's almost as though the district and the Board wants to shut some of us out of the loop. The public, the Bond Oversight Committee, and the media has not been provided with the information we need and have been asking for. Tonight is the first board meeting to actually discuss Stige, but it's a one-sided issue. You're moving too fast with this. Go ahead, boo me if you want, but I'm trying to say, do more than just...
Thank you.
Move to the next.
Our next public comment is Michelle Jackson.
There's a little face. If you press the face, the little red light will come on. There you go.
There's an African proverb that says, "The man who does not cultivate his own land will starve to death." We, the community of Stige, started this cultivation in July. We are now ready for the harvest. I want to thank the Board, the staff, the facilities department, and everybody that saw that presentation on Stige. Pictures are worth a thousand words. one of the oldest schools in the district, and we're moving too fast? We came here at the Great Migration from the South for a better life. Do the right thing. You're capable.
Please conclude your comment.
My name is Willie McGaney. I'm the pastor of, of St. Peter's CME Church, which is a stone cat.
Sir, sorry, please hold, sir, please hold for just one moment. Sir, are you speaking on the E?
We have a very...
Three?
Anyway.
Go ahead and put one minute. Would you please tell us your name and we'll put one minute on, please?
Sir, what is your, what's your name, sir?
He can go. Mr. Booker? Mr. Booker, he can go for a minute. That's okay. Can we just have his name? So we can just double check.
Thank you. Forgive me for, uh, bypassing protocol. But I understand that I'm the pastor of, of St. Peter's CME Church, which is only a stone cast away from Stige. We, we have a very vested, celebrated history and interest in Stige. I, I pastor a generation of folk who've gone to Stige. E, even, even during this, this displacement, we, we, as, um, um, as needed basis, we've opened our doors for parents and, and students who miss buses or whatever and they needed somewhere to go. I'm also the president of the El Sarito chapter of the NAACP. So let me speak a moment on that. This is about equality. And as I stand here, I believe two things to be true. If the students at Stige were not black and brown, the school would have never deteriorated. And even now, this would not be an issue. This is not more than an issue of funds. This is an issue of will. So I plead with you, find it in your heart to will to do the right thing.
And that concludes public comment on item...
Our next public comment is Rodney Brown. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Don Gosny, Gosny, let me give you some good Chronicle context. Rule number one, don't get high on your home supply. What do you mean we're moving too fast? My grandparents came here with my mom and her siblings in a red pickup truck in 1943, seeking after a better life from the rural south. What do you mean we're moving too fast? Actually, we were moving at a snail's pace. That school should have been repaired, been rebuilt, et cetera, et cetera. Nothing has transpired over the course since the school has been built. What do you mean we're moving too fast? Maybe you're thinking too slow while we're moving in a speed of light. And when I say the speed of light, I'm talking about in the right formation. I don't know what the problem is or what kind of power trip you on, but brother, you are being outmanned at this very moment.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you for all who made public comment on this item. We're moving to questions. Do any trustees have questions on the item?
I just have one question. I'm curious as to why all five of the modernizations were multiple millions of dollars under budget. Is there a quick explanation to that?
It's a great question. So one of the things that we changed in 2016 was before we asked the board to award the construction contract. And typically, the construction project contract, that's going to be the largest percent of any project budget. And what we said is, if we're going to ask the board to approve a construction contract, we have to have enough dollars in the project budget to cover the full project. And so when we've needed to do a project budget increase, very similar to how we're bringing it before the board tonight, we've asked the board to increase the project budget when we knew what the project was really going to cost. We have estimates that we use, we use historical data, we do estimates throughout the design process. But when you go out to bid, when you get a proposal, that's when you really know what your project's going to cost. And so essentially, for every project, we should always have savings. So the savings that we're bringing forward in item E4 tonight, there's a couple of savings, not in the millions of dollars, but in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for a lot of projects. But on one of them in particular, we're returning more than a million dollars to the project. And I think it's worth sharing why. The Riverside Critical Needs Project was, the original intent of the project was to tear down an existing building and rebuild it in another place on the campus because there's a creek that runs behind the campus. We were worried about the structural stability of that building. Well, there wasn't anything that was wrong with the building yet. And so what we did was essentially an engineering marvel, where we did what's called soil stabilization. Very, very cool piece of equipment shows up, an incredible crew that does projects all around the world came in, and they essentially injected the soil with cement. And they had, I have no other way other than to describe it, but if you're a baker and you have a paddle at home and you're mixing, they essentially mixed the soil with cement, shored up, stabilized the soil along the creek bed, and saved the building. So we accomplished the intent of the project, but we did it to the tune of more than a million dollars in project savings. So what the board approves is really a scope and a budget. We accomplished the scope, which was the project's intent, within the project budget, and then we come back and ask that those dollars be returned. I think it's an excellent question, and I have a story for each one.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Can I interrupt for just a moment? On the point of order, the time is now 9:58. We need to extend the meeting. How much longer do we think we need to go to complete all the items through the evening? An hour, 11 o'clock?
I would ask Cabinet to try to keep it to the hour. So be succinct. I would ask that we keep it to the hour, and I'll ask Cabinet to be succinct with presentations so that we can meet that hour deadline.
Okay. I'll put a motion on the floor to extend the meeting until 11. Is there a second?
Second.
Go to a vote. Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Trustee Anyana?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, continue. Thank you very much. I'm sorry about that.
So what is, if you know the number, what is that sort of safety net for the Stige rebuild? If there is one?
So we are at the beginning. And as you work through the project and you get closer and closer to the building, you learn a lot more. So in construction, we have something that's called basically like unforeseen conditions. When we're doing a complete rebuild, we're going to, what we're proposing tonight is to go in and completely demolish the existing campus and then build new. So you'll have, you may have unforeseen conditions in the ground, for example. So in construction, and this is standard practice, we do it on all projects. It's the best practice. There's contingency that's built in for those unknowns. And as we get further and further in design, we have more engineering reports and other things. As we learn more about the project, those contingencies get smaller and smaller as we move forward.
Trustee Anyana, do you have questions?
No questions.
Trustee Hernandez?
No questions.
Trustee Espinoza Jr., did I skip you? I apologize for that.
No questions.
Okay. Trustee Smith Folds?
No questions.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
No questions.
Okay. I do have a question and I want to talk about, just one question on... If you could talk about the demographics of the area in terms of enrollment, projected enrollment, and will the school size that is being built accommodate what's needed in the community for the students that live in that area?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. So when you build a facility, you're building it for the future. And so one of the things that we do is we look at demographic data so that we can build for the community as the demographics demonstrate. And so according to the 2023-24 demographic report, the projected enrollment for fiscal year 2030 is 207 students. However, it also shows, so that's projected enrollment, it also shows that the projected elementary age students residing in the Stige boundaries to be just under 400. So something that we do with all of our facilities when we're planning for a capacity is we look at the data. And again, we're looking at the data in the outer years. Across our district, we do not assume 100% capture rate for all of the students within the boundary. The proposed capacity of the new design is 340 students. And so that's the data that we've used to prepare the educational specifications for this project.
Thank you. And then how do you plan to involve the community in the rebuilding effort, both from design standpoint and communication standpoint? Letting people know what's going on, how they can be involved, all of those important questions?
So I want to make sure I heard the question clearly. How do we include the community during the design process and engage? Is that what you said?
Yeah. How will the community be involved, both in the design process and then the communication about what is going on on that site?
So we like to describe it in two ways. One of them is engagement. And that's really having meetings, focus groups, listening sessions. It's going to look different for every community, and that's really about being a partner with the community and finding the best way to really engage with students, family, and community. There's also the communication piece, and we call that like outreach. So when we say outreach, we're talking about things like having the project newsletter, having the project website, sending out flyers in the backpack to go home, making sure that we're bringing those updates. And so one of the things that we committed to in a partnering session, we had the meeting at the Stige temp campus. And one of the things that was asked for is meeting with the community and providing project updates quarterly. One of the things that Principal Velez has done throughout, she was also the principal for the reconstruction, the reconstruction of Wilson, becoming Michelle Obama, is meeting at the Stige temp campus and bringing those updates to the community, bringing them to the site. We can also do meetings at Booker T. Community Center, as we did some of the outreach in August. So I don't stand here with the answers, but I stand here with a bunch of different options and the commitment that we're going to find the best ways. And that really comes from partnering with the site leadership and the community.
Thank you. And if I may, I'm sorry, the sound in here is so bad. Did you say site council as well, the school's site council, or parent groups on campus?
Absolutely. Every way that we can.
Okay, thank you. Okay, would anybody like to put a motion on the floor on this item, E3?
President, I make a motion that we approve the increase of the project budget for Stige campus replacement by $18 million and approve the contract for the design and construction of the Stige Elementary School replacement project between the West Contra Costa Unified School District and Alton Construction LLC in the amount of $51 million.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there board comments? Go right ahead. Two minutes, please.
Thank you. I just want to thank Ms. Payne because I know that she has been working day and night for the last few weeks to make this happen. And as someone who has been in the background watching that work, I'm just so thankful that you and your department were able to make this happen in collaboration with our interim superintendent. So you get very little sometimes public appreciation because of the work that we do. I just want to say thank you because in part, I think, not just because of the public advocacy, but because of your work to make this happen in urgency. So thank you. And I encourage us to please have a unanimous vote on this one and the other two Stige items. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also, I won't take a lot of time because the night is long. I also want to thank everybody for their very, very hard work on this and piecing it together. And I want to thank you, Ms. Payne, as well for your hard work and dedication. Those funds together, seeming that, finding how you can make it work. So I want to thank you very much. Okay, with that, we'll move... Oh, and you have comments as well? Yes.
I also had a comment. So I am really excited that this has come up to the board. I think it's been long waiting. As a community, you know, I really hope that the process moving forward be as transparent and be all-inclusive to the greater community. I think that it's really going to take community buy-in, not just from students and parents, but the greater community to be able to come in and support. I know that not everybody who's calling in or, you know, takes their time to be part of this process has children in the school district currently, but they have, they have a connection, they have something that brings them to the table. So, you know, really making sure that moving forward, we are present and, you know, the community is present, is leading the direction and that we are working together collaboratively to be able to make this, you know, a vision of hope for all. And, you know, that bigger community buy-in, like I said, you know, take pride in ownership. And, you know, it's about time and, you know, the children deserve it. So I'm...
Okay. And we'll go to the vote. Seeing no further comments, we'll go to the vote. Student trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Student trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Anyana?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The item passes unanimously. Now it doesn't really matter. We'll go back to the resolution. So we'll put Resolution 242546, Resolution in Support of a Complete Rebuild Project for Stige Elementary School. Ms. Payne, you're up.
So I brought another quote card. And this one says, "A school is a building which has four walls with tomorrow inside." This resolution, I can't take credit for, it was drafted by trustee Gonzalez Hoi. And in partnership, we bring that together tonight before you, really celebrating the board and community's commitment to making Stige the absolute best that it can be.
So trustee Gonzalez Hoi, do you want to read the resolve clauses?
Sure. Thank you, President. Thank you, Ms. Payne. Be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education commits to continue supporting Stige Elementary School and investing in the students and staff who attend and work at the school. Be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education directs staff to assign the additional dollars identified by staff mentioned above, which is the $18 million, in this resolution for the complete rebuild of Stige Elementary School. Be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education directs staff to return to the Board of Education during the rebuild process for Stige if there are changes to the scope of the project and there are either project savings or additional funding needed. Be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education expects the complete rebuild of Stige Elementary School with, will be equitable to the previous rebuilds of other elementary schools like Lake Elementary School and Michelle Obama Elementary School. Be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education directs staff to send updates and communication quarterly to the Stige Elementary School community to update them on the progress of the rebuild of the school. And lastly, be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education directs staff to engage the Stige Elementary School families, staff, students, and community through various means, including but not limited to listening sessions, general surveys, and focus groups, to provide opportunities for feedback to staff and the Board of Education on the Stige Elementary School project. Thank you.
We are now moving to public comment on E2, Resolution 2425, Resolution in Support of a Complete Rebuild for Stige Elementary School. One minute on the clock for each person. Thank you so much.
Our first public comment is Arturo Cruz.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Arturo Cruz, and I'm the mayor of San Pablo. And I come here to show support for Stige Elementary School. And I also want to thank our school district for your ongoing partnership with our city of San Pablo. And congratulations to all the trustees that were sworn in today. Keep up the great work, you guys. Thank you so much, and thank you all, community, for supporting. She's a brother. Thank you. Cisuprela, thank you.
Our next public comment is Goldie Williams. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
First of all, I like to say cisuprela as well. I want to say that we are stronger together. I think it is so vitally important for us to understand as a community, for us not to get sucked into what we see on the news and social media into thinking that we should be in apathy. We are a people, we are strong together, not one, like, it doesn't matter about color, we are one community and we are united. And when we work together, we can get things accomplished. And I want to encourage everyone, not just those in the District of Siege, the fight is not over. We need to see you show up at the planning meetings and everything that happens throughout the process so that we can all be a part of it. And those students know that their community supports them. Congratulations, everyone. Great work to our community. Man, we, this, this was, this was a great one. Y'all got me over here crying. God bless and good night.
Our next public comment is Michelle Jackson.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is Maria Resendiz. Please unmute yourself.
I want to thank the board for your decision tonight about Siege. And I also want to remind everyone that a house is not a home. So just as we are committed to rebuild Siege, I think we also have to be committed to make sure that it's a welcoming environment. I still remember the first day I took my son to re-rebuild Riverside Elementary when the secretary did not speak any Spanish and I did not speak any English. But she was so welcoming and caring that she gave me the confidence to keep my children there until everyone graduated. Thank you.
Next public comment is David Driscoll.
Hello, my name is David Driscoll. I'm an alumni of Siege Elementary School, and I fully support the funding in the rebuild of the school. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Rodney Brown. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I want to say thank you all for, for taking the initiative, having the passion to pass this resolution. Special shots out to Ms. Jackson, Ms. Laquisha, Demetria Hoy, and Ms. Payne. You all rock, and I say that with sheer sincerity. And also, Ms. Guadalupe, you as well, you all have been steadfast in this approach and making sure that this item is brought to justice. When, like Ms. Goldie said, the work isn't complete yet. We have a bevy of planning, planning meetings that we need to attend. There's a lot of things that has to be done moving forward, but just to get the boat in the water, it's a beautiful thing. God bless y'all.
Next public comment is Natalie Allen. Natalie Allen? Willie McDaniel?
To the board, let me apologize, I got too passionate. But this is a serious issue for us. No, I don't apologize for that. I don't. I thank you for hearing me. But this is, I, I say it again, this is a matter of the will. And I'm just believing and praying that you have the will to do it. Thank you.
Next public comment, Don Gosny. Marina Brown?
Good evening. First, let me say congratulations to the newly elected board members, but your work, excellent job. And let me say thank you to the Siege alumnis, we did, and to the administrators. We did an event at Siege School today, and those children deserve to thrive, grow, and strive. In that small environment, they're making the best of what they do, and thank you for what you are doing with those children. But we did share the joy, but what you did tonight, you made the joy. Merry Christmas and Feliz Navidad.
Welcome.
I just want to say thank you to everyone that decided to do the right thing. The last time that I had spoke, I asked what was next. I'm really proud that you made the right decision to show us what's next. And we're so happy to have a new building coming. I'm a part of the alumni, and I'm pretty sure that the children will be happy as well.
Next public comment is Leah McIntosh.
I hate to yell you out, but it's so frustrating to be back here and unable to hear you. I, I'm not a professional, I'm a real kind of sort of, but everybody is.
Ma'am, could you talk in, into the mic? I can't even hear you.
Everyone, no one seems to be having a problem. But anyway, I want to thank you for taking the first step towards this process. And I want to remind you and ask you that you keep the community engaged. There should be a community part of the planning in this process, and I, you have to do that. Secondly, we need you to not just now, but in two years when the school is, has been completed, the same kind of support that you garnered here this evening. And again, thank you. I'm not mad anymore. I'm just anticipating great things. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Liz Sanders.
Good evening, President Reckler and members of the board. I have several points of gratitude to convey on behalf of State Superintendent Thurmond. If it's possible to request extra time in order to convey what State Superintendent Thurmond has asked me to convey, I respectfully and humbly ask for that.
Yes, please go right ahead.
Thank you so much. So, good evening, President Reckler and members of the board. I am proud to be here tonight on behalf of State Superintendent Tony Thurmond, who wishes that he could be here himself to speak in favor of the rebuild of Siege Elementary School. We know that our Siege Stars are the heartbeat of our community, who deserve a school campus that communicates our unflinching belief in their high potential. Superintendent Thurmond is highly aware of the challenges that districts across our state face when financing the construction and modernization of school facilities. That's part of why Superintendent Thurmond worked to pass Prop two this past November, establishing new statewide funds for school construction in order to ease the local burden of necessary projects just like this one. As we've already heard and seen tonight, it has taken persistence, ingenuity, and heart to allocate these funds. We commend the WCCUSD Board, Dr. Moses, Dr. Hurst, Ms. Payne, Principal Velez, and our tireless community advocates for their leadership, courage, and tenacity. And we thank Supervisor Joya, Mayor Weisinger, Mayor Martinez, and Mayor Cruz for the collaboration to make sure that the Siege community has remained in the forefront of our minds and at the top of our shared priorities. Thank you again to all who have worked to get us this far, and congratulations to our Siege Stars.
And our last public comment is Dulce Galicia.
Hello, I'm here also in support of Siege. And my name is Dulce Galicia. I'm with Fierce Advocates. We do parent-led advocacy in Richmond, California, to advocate for the voices of Latinx and other parents and caregivers of colors in the district. I learned from a very wise person that's here today about the necessity for the rebuild of Siege. And it's thanks to the work of multiple community members behind me that this work is being pushed. And also because it tugged the heart of a couple of members of you here in front of me as well. Fierce has supported Siege families as we were brought in by some of the organizers and coordinators. So we take the lead of parent leaders to do the work that we do in schools. I do believe this is a huge question of fairness and equity and glad to see that this is happening.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you to all who made the public comment. Board, are there any questions on this resolution? Seeing none, trustee Gonzalez Oy, would you like to put a motion on the floor?
Yes, thank you, President. I make a motion that we approve Resolution number two, four, two, five, dash, four, six, in support of a complete rebuild project for Siege Elementary School.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I second.
Gonzalez Oy with Hernandez, seconding. Does anybody on the board have comments? I have a comment. I want to thank you all again for your hard work, all of you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving to the vote, student trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Student trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Trustee Anyana?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Oy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes. Okay. Okay. Hold for just a moment. Okay, I'm sorry, we've missed a public comment. Is Mr. Robert Creer here would like to make comment?
Wow.
Mr. Creer, please, please accept our apologies.
Thank you very much. I know everybody's got a little late now, but I want to thank you. I was one of the first students to attend Siege Elementary School. Also, I was an employee in the district for fifty-one years. So I, and I see a number of individuals that I actually assisted in getting their positions in the school district. And I want to thank the board for what you just accomplished. One of the things that I did in my first actual statewide program was to create the Human Relations Department in the Unified School District, the first one and the only one. And I'm so pleased to see that the decisions that we are making now in the Unified School District makes sense. Because one of the things we never did get clear on is why didn't Siege get built when it was supposed to get built? And remodeled? As a traffic boy being there, when I passed by the day as a traffic boy coming to the board meeting tonight, I said, wow, man, I hope they pull it off. I want to thank you very much for what you accomplished tonight. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. We're now moving to E four, which should be really quick. Approve the proposed bond program site budget authorization. Ms. Payne, I believe this is your item.
Good evening. Thank you. Tonight, staff recommends that you approve the proposed bond program site budget authorization, which will return project savings for completed projects only and increase the central budget by one point five million to cover the costs for the people and the services required to complete the projects.
Thank you. Is there public comments on this item? E four?
No public comment.
Thank you. Does anybody on the board have questions on this item? Okay, seeing none. Would somebody like to put a measure, a resolution on the, on the floor for E four?
President, I'll move that we approve the updated bond program site budget authorization.
Is there a second on this item? I'll second it. Is there any comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Student trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Student trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Anyana?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Oy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, moving on to E five, presentation of the WCCUSD Measure T Parcel Tax Audit as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Moses, Dr. Moses, this is your item.
Thank you, President Reckler. We have Susan Barnes, who needs to be promoted to the panel in order to present this brief presentation. Susan represents SCI, our consultants that support with the management of our parcel tax and our Measure T Parcel Tax. She's going to present the audit. Susan, I'll pass it to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I, I know that it's late tonight, so I will be brief. I do wanted to, though, take a moment to take a personal thank you to the district. My family moved to the district when I was about ready to enter seventh grade, and I was educated there until the time I graduated from El Cerrito High School. So thank you for the wonderful education that you gave me that put me on the trajectory, trajectory to be able to be here tonight to, to present this report to you. So this is the annual tax report. For, for your tax, it brings in a little over ten million dollars a year. The purpose of this report is just to give you an overview of how much money was brought in in the previous fiscal year. We do expect a similar amount for this tax to bring in in the coming fiscal year. This pays for core, core academic programs like reading, writing, math, and science, helps to provide manageable, manage, manageable class sizes, supports after-school programs, keeps programs that prepare students for college and train them for the workforce, provide computers, technology, lab materials, and then is intended to also help to reach, retain and attract quality teachers. Again, I don't want to take a lot of your time. I know it's a late night tonight, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you have about this item.
Thank you for your presentation. Is there any public comments on this item?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. We're moving to board questions. Does anybody on the board have questions on this item? Okay, I have questions. Thank you for your presentation. First, I'm curious what kind, in the board proceeds, this is listed as an audit. I'm curious as to what kind of an audit this is, since you don't seem to be CPAs and there doesn't seem to be an auditor's opinion of modified or other. Would you explain exactly what it is that I'm looking at here tonight?
Yes, so I'm sorry, I don't know why it's listed as an audit. You're correct, this is not an audit. We are not CPAs. This is simply a tax report that is required to go to the board every year. And so it's, it is not an audit.
Okay, thank, I'm sorry, I'm having so many problems with the hearing today. Okay, thank you very much. My next question is, it's on the Independent Community Oversight Committee. So that committee, in theory, exists. It really hasn't, hasn't met, and since, I think the last meeting was in March of twenty twenty. Okay, so the last agenda that was posted was in March, March ninth of twenty twenty, and the last minutes that were posted were of April twenty nineteen. What is your recommendation on any language related to the Independent Community Oversight Committee, since it is not meeting, hasn't met for years?
You know, I would have to take a look at what the original language was of the tax, because I think it may have been promised to the voters that there would be this committee meeting. So we'd have to take a look at that. But, you know, my, my first recommendation would be to, is to, as soon as possible, see if you could reform that committee and get that started up again. But barring that, we, we could look at changing language in the report if we need to, to bring that more in line with what's actually happening.
Okay, thank you. And my final question is, so when Mr. Ash was here last, he's from Christie White, May fifteen, twenty twenty-four. We asked Mr. White if the ballot language, if it doesn't include overhead costs, you shouldn't spend parcel tax dollars on it. And so I have from July seventeenth that twenty seven, eight, eight hundred and ninety. that $27893 was allocated from our parcel tax fund to pay for your services. I know you're not accountants, but since you administer the program, if it's not included in the parcel tax, nor is it listed on any of these budgets that you have in this report, what is your recommendation on what to do about that?
Again, I would need to take a look at what the original language was of the tax. We, you know, normally parcel taxes do pay for our annual administration, but I'd have to take a look at what that says specifically and see whether it would be allowed. And if not, then, you know, then you would, we would recommend that you, you pay for our fees from some other fund.
Okay, thank you. All right, any, nobody else has questions on the item? Okay, so I would like to put a motion on the floor that we are accepting the Measure T parcel tax report. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay, so report, not an audit, so we're going to strike audit as of June 30th, 2024. And I would also request that before this gets handed in, that language around the viability of the committee is updated to reality, which is that the board did approve a committee, but it has not met since, I, I can't really figure it out. I think like 2020?
Yes, we'd be happy to make that change and send you a new, a new draft.
Okay, and finally then, I would like a follow-up from one of our accountants as to how we are paying for this, based on Mr. Ash's comments in October. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, are there any board comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Student trustee Wilson.
Yes.
Student Espinoza Jr.
Yes.
Trustee Anjana.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith-Foltz.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving now to E6, first interim. Dr. Moses, this is your item.
Thank you, President Reckler. I'd like to invite Jeff.
It's okay, I'm not used to it either. I'm like, who's that?
I'd like to invite Jeff Carter to the podium. Jeff is our Executive Director of Business Services, and he will be presenting the first interim report for our board tonight. Jeff, go ahead.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for letting me report on the first interim financial report tonight. First, I want to give a big thank you to all of the employees in Business Services that put this report together over the last several months. I'll try and keep this brief. Next slide, please. So tonight, we are in December, which is the first interim report with data as of October 31st, 2024. So far this year, on the budget cycle, on the right side of that slide, we have done the adopted budget and unaudited actuals. We'll be back in March for the second interim report. This report tonight, we're going to update you on district enrollment, review the latest projected revenue and expenditures, and adjustments to the multi-year projections. Next slide. The first interim process compares changes from revenue and expenditures from adopted budget till first interim, reviews all financial resources and departmental budgets to ensure that we can meet our obligations through June 30th, 2025, examines the adjustments to annual revenues and expenses, and amends the 2425 budget and multi-year projections to match our expected needs for the rest of the year and future two years. Next slide. Changes since the adopted budget. These are kind of highlights of what we're going to go over tonight on the slides. There's been a decrease in fund balance since the unaudited actuals, decrease in enrollment projections, increased ADA from projections, increased to TK ADA, increased to unduplicated pupil percentage by 0.24%, and increased contributions to special ed, and a shift in expenditures from unrestricted to restricted funds. Next slide. So this slide is the enrollment trends versus our ADA and funded ADA. First, you'll notice those blue columns. That is our trend of enrollment over the last seven years. And then the lighter blue columns to the far right, those are our projected enrollments over the next two years. The interesting thing about this graph, we'll start with ADA. So we're funded by our ADA, average daily attendance. The red line that you see there on the graph is what our ADA is relative to our enrollment. The purple line that you're looking at is the funded ADA. So that's how much in revenue we receive for LCFF or unrestricted funds based on our ADA. In the first three columns, from 1819 to 2021, you'll see that our funded ADA is on, on par with the red ADA line. In the past, we used to be funded for whatever our ADA was. When COVID struck, the state knew that we could not sustain or take a hit to our ADA that would be sudden and immediate as we hadn't had time to prepare any reductions or know what our enrollment or ADA would be for the, for the upcoming years. So they prepared a way for a soft landing, which was instead of taking your current ADA, you could take your current ADA, your last year's ADA, or the prior three years' average ADA to become your funded ADA, whatever is greatest of those three options. You, so the purple line and the red line between 21 and 24, you'll see that gap. There's that white area between the red line and the purple line. That shows that we were funded much higher than we actually had in ADA those years. We actually were funded more than our enrollment in those years due to our prior three-year average lifting us up in revenue for those years. If you now look at 2425, you'll see that our average of the prior three years has been decreasing enough that our, our current ADA and our three-year prior average ADA is becoming much closer in, in this year and the next two years. So you'll see our, our funded ADA coming back down to where our current ADA is at, which is what the state's goal was in giving us that soft landing and giving us a couple of years to adjust and prepare for lower revenues. So that's, this one, next slide, please. Taking that in mind, the effect of COLA analysis. COLA is the cost of living adjustment. It's kind of the state's way of keeping up with inflation, letting us, give us increased revenues. Over the last few years, there's been a lot of talk about COLA. The COLA this year was decreased down to 1.07%. And you'll see here, this first number I'm showing, 2324, is the unaudited actuals LCFF revenues. We had $344.9 million last year. This year, as the first interim for 2425, we're projecting $337.6 million, and that's with the 1.07 COLA included. So had we not gotten the COLA of 1.07%, that $337 million revenue would be even less. This is due to the decreased enrollment and three-year average ADA funded decreasing. You'll see we have $7.2 million less than we had last year, even with the increase in COLA. So the percentage change year over year from 2324 revenue to 2425 revenue is negative 2.1%. Without the COLA, we would be negative 3.17%. So even with the COLA, we have less revenue than last year due to declining enrollment and our three-year average funded ADA decreasing. So that's, that's kind of our situation with the COLA and decreasing revenues. Next slide. This is the LCFF revenue changes. So here you'll see what our adopted budget figures were and what our first interim figures are, and then the changes to those. So ADA has increased over the, over, from our projections at adopted budget. COLA has stayed the same, 1.07%. Unduplicated has gone up slightly by 0.24%. And then those adjustments to base and supplemental concentration are slightly awash. And then TK increasing by 273,000%, or $273,000. The total LCFF revenue is increased by about $100,000 from adopted budget to now for LCFF unrestricted revenue. Next slide. So these, these charts will show you the unrestricted and combined revenue changes from adopted budget to first interim. You'll see here the LCFF sources, that's that $105,000 figure. Unrestricted, there are no federal revenues that are unrestricted. They're all, they are all restricted. So you'll see zero dollars there. Other state revenue increased by 180,000. Other local revenue increased by 200,000. And overall, our revenues will increase by about 500,000 as of first interim projections. Down below, you'll see the combined revenues. This is unrestricted plus restricted funds. So any difference that you see between the combined and the unrestricted above is going to be your restricted funds making, making up that difference. So LCFF sources stay the same. All unrestricted funds are $105,000 increase. Federal revenues, this is where you're seeing all restricted funds in federal revenues is an increase by $5.4 million. Other state and, and other local revenues increased by four and three million for a total increase of $13.1 million, almost all being realized on the restricted side of the, of the funds. Next slide. All right, so these are expenditure changes. These are what we spent, unrestricted expenditure changes. From adopted budget to first interim, for salaries, certificated classified salaries and employee benefits, you'll see a decrease of about $10 million. Those funds have been shifted over to restricted funds. So on the, when we get to the next slide, I'll show you where those have gone. This is due to moving ongoing salaries to one-time restricted dollars to give us a little more flexibility in what you'll see down below for the contribution amount increasing this year. We'll go to books and supplies down by 1.5 million. There's some shifts there. We typically budget site and department budgets into the 4,000s. Once we get the site and department budgets, LCAP budgets, budget transfers have happened. Site SPSA plans have been approved. We, we then do budget transfers, and sometimes those dollars go to salaries. Sometimes they go to fives and other services for contracts. So in this case, you're seeing a 1.5 million dollar decrease in books and supplies. But then on the next line, services and other operating expenses, you're seeing an increase of 2.1 million. So majority of that decrease is a, a shift from books and supplies down to services and other operating costs based on site and department budgets. Indirect costs increasing, it's a negative number of $3.5 million. It's an increase since it's revenue. So negative 5.9 million at adopted budget, negative 9.5 million at first interim. The increase here for indirect costs is due to the increase in restricted fund spending, expenditures, restricted fund expenditures. So when we get to the next slide, I'll show you that increase in expenditures, and that will explain how our indirect cost is going, going up as well. And then the contribution going up by 14 million for special, for special education mostly. That's our unrestricted expenditure changes. So if we can go to the next slide and we'll look at the restricted expenditure changes. Here you'll see the increase to certificated classified salaries and employee benefits. On the previous slide, it was about $10 million that we were moving from unrestricted to restricted. Here you'll see about $20 million increase in restricted funds. So a big portion of that 20 million is the 10 that we're moving from unrestricted to restricted for learning recovery, one-time restricted funds for ongoing expenses that in the multi-year projection, we're going to have to move back to unrestricted. But the other increases in this, in these salaries and benefits are the ESAR COVID dollars for the one-time 2.5% stipend that the unions received or all of our staff and employees have received. That is one-time spending in restricted funds that are increasing these salaries and benefits, as well as restricted resources like community schools grants and Prop 28 increases to salaries and extra time and time cards there. In books and supplies, you'll see about $1 million increasing. Services and other operating expenditures, also $32 million increase from adopted budget. The, the line here is a large increase from adopted budget, but there are things at adopted budget that we just don't know. And going through these last five months, we, we know more. We've got sites and departments budgeting, encumbering POs, new contracts. It's, it's an overall increase to our budget for the 5,000s in restricted funds. Majority of those are one-time funds that will eventually go away. Indirect costs, because of the increase in our expenditures, the total expenditure is 58 million, you'll see the $3 million increase to indirect costs that goes directly as revenue to unrestricted. So these are the costs of running the programs. When we get grants, a portion of that grant can go back to unrestricted to pay our... So those go to fund our unrestricted expenses to run the programs. Next slide. So these are considerations for our NYPD. We are declining enrollment, dropping in the three-year funded ADA, increasing special ed contribution, economic downturns, projections for interest and rates, Fund 17 remaining balance, and restricted funds remaining balance. Next slide. This is our consideration or our factors for the NYPD. You'll see our COLA and CalSTRS and PERS rates for the next few years. But next slide. Unrestricted general.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you jump to like the two most important things in this? This meeting ends in like 11 minutes.
Yep. Sure. You want to go to the, well, we'll go to the, we'll go to the NYPD real quick. So the next slide, we'll go to the combined one. You'll see our expense, our revenues and expenditures and the operating deficit, the beginning fund balance without a Fund 17 transfer. And then you'll see that yellow line with the Fund 17 transfer, and then the line below that for what our fund balance will be with the Fund 17 transfer. Below that, you'll see our non-spendable, our restricted funds, and our assigned increase for health and welfare as of January 2025, and then our 3% required reserve. Next slide. This is a graph of our special ed contributions over the years. You'll see the increase to special ed contribution, which is unrestricted dollars that go to pay for special ed services above and beyond any special ed revenue. Next slide. Fund 17 projected remaining balance 2024. We currently have 37.6 million. With the 11.5 million contribution, we'll have about $26 million left, and that is with interest earned over the course of the year. In 2025, 26, we'll have about $13 million left after a contribution. And then in 2627, after a $13 million contribution, we'll have about $1,709 projected with interest over the three years. Next slide. Our multi-year projection, we can meet the 3% required reserve in general fund with an 11.5 million contribution from Fund 17. In 2526, we can meet the 3% required reserve with fiscal reductions and an additional 13 and a half million contribution from Fund 17. And then in 2627, we can meet the 3% required reserve with fiscal reductions and an additional 13.3 million contribution from Fund 17, basically expending all of Fund 17 over those three years. Next slide. And then we'll present to you tonight a positive budget due to the definition of the, of a positive certification. The district projected to be able to meet its financial obligations all three years with Fund 17 contributions. Next slide. Thank you so much, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. We'll go quickly to board questions if anybody has a pressing question. See.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment.
Okay, we'll move, we'll move to that. Next, please put a motion on the floor to accept the first interim.
We'll make a motion that we accept the first interim with a positive budget certification.
Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second it. Go ahead with comments.
I just want to thank the staff and acknowledge, you know, that they've worked on this very hard. I do have several questions, but I can follow up later because I feel like I didn't have enough time. But I do want to thank the staff for their hard work that they did. Thank you.
Thank you. It will come back. Yes, please. Yes, please, go ahead.
There is no neutrality in racism and the racism struggle. You're either actively working to dismantle racist idea systems and norms, or you're not. Your vote is your voice, your value, and your character. I am complete.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further comment, move to vote. Student trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Student trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Trustee Anjana?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Foltz?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Moving to the approval for the contract for interim Associate Superintendent Business Services for board approval. Hold with me, I have a little speech. Okay, so before taking final action on an employment agreement for a local agency executive or a salary or benefit increase for current local agency executive, the board must state in public session that the board is being asked to approve an employment agreement with David D. Hart to serve as interim Associate Superintendent Business Services. The employment agreement has been attached to the agenda online for review. The employment agreement provides, one, the contract term for the following time period, December 19, 2024 to June 30, 2025. The interim Associate Superintendent of Business Services annual salary is $254,313.26, with health and welfare benefits consistent with classified administrators of the district. Once the compensation report is made, which I just did, the board will take final action in open session. Okay, so that is the item to approve the contract for Mr. Hart. Is there any public comment on this item? Was there any presentation? Nothing?
There's no public comment.
Okay, no public comment. Go to board questions. Any questions? None. Okay, motion on the floor? Okay, I'll go ahead and move the contract as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any comment? Seeing none, go to a vote. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Trustee Anjana?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Smith Foltz is absent. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Okay, with five minutes remaining, I think we need to table your superintendent reporter. Is there anything urgent? And I would like to, I'd like to table, I'd like to move to ratified contracts. I'd like to table C1, Superintendent Search Board Committee, and I'd like to table the 18th nondiscrimination policy for approval. And let's move to the next meeting, and let's move directly to C5 ratified contracts, so I can just have my little item that I can't stand, and that's parent square. And the reason why I pulled it is that board members cannot find out what's going on in their schools. We cannot be added to the software, so we don't know what's going on. Last year, on January 10th, 2024, I also voted against this item, and it was said that a solution would be brought back to board members about how they could find out what's going on in their schools. That never came back, and so I have pulled this item so that I personally can vote no on it. That is my comments on that. Does anybody else have questions on the item at all? Or staff have questions, or?
I think Director Forrest has a quick update about the capabilities of Parent Square.
Yes, please go right ahead.
Apologies. Thank you, Superintendent Moses. Good evening, board. Yes, just a quick update in regards to Parent Square. I just want to say that we are excited to introduce a new Parent Square feature to our broader community in the coming weeks after winter break. This is called Community Groups. And what you do and how you use the Community Group feature, anyone who is not a staff member or a parent will be encouraged to sign up to subscribe to Parent Square posts and notifications. So supporters can sign up by completing a short form on their school website. And we are working with our sites to share this information broadly and other forms of branding materials. So in addition, although board members have access to Parent Square updates, the board can sign up for Community Groups to receive information from all schools in the areas they serve. So we're excited to bring that to the board tonight.
Terrific. I'm delighted to hear that. Okay, so that was my spiel on that item. I'll go ahead and move Parent Square. Is there a second? Is there a second on Parent Square? Otherwise, it's going to fail.
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Gonzalez Hoi, second. Any comments on the item? Please say no. Student trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Trustee Anjana?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Foltz?
Yes.
She said yes. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you for doing that work. We are at the end. The next board meeting for the West Contra Costa Unified School District is scheduled for January 8th, 2025, right here at Levante Don Middle School. Please enjoy the break, and happy 2025 to everybody. Thank you.